Okay, I'd like to begin the Iowa City City Council's work session agenda for Tuesday, December the 4th, 2018. First topic on the agenda is to review the solar feasibility study which we commissioned. Is someone going to speak about this?
Yes, I will introduce it. So, good afternoon, good evening. Late last year, council had requested a further exploration of the feasibility of a solar, some type of solar photovoltaic system or fixture at one of our city facilities. I know there was interest in what that could look like as it pertained to our development of the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, or for just a variety of reasons, looking to see if a solar system would be possible at one of our facilities. So, we went out for a request for proposals. We identified the firm Blue Stem Energy Solutions, they're in Omaha, Nebraska, as the right team to evaluate our facilities for such a project. And so tonight, we have a couple of them here to represent Blue Stem, Jamie Goldenberg and Srikanth Madala. And they'll be presenting a short summary of the study, their analysis, and what they found. They'll also be providing city council a recommendation as to that analysis. And I'll probably take it, let you guys take it from here. Thanks.
Well, thank you for having us here this evening. It's been a pleasure working with your city staff. They've been very helpful with us.
Can you speak into the mic a little bit more?
Yes, is that better?
Yeah.
So, I'm Jamie Goldenberg, I'm an energy consultant with Blue Stem. This is Srikanth Madala, he leads our research and development team, big part of our development. So, we have a few slides here to kind of high level go over what we went through in our feasibility study, mostly focused on the recommendation portion. I don't know, I know the mayor had a chance to read through our feasibility study, so I think just for time concerns, we have, we can hold questions off till the end, and we'll just kind of jump right in. So, we're hoping to go through today, just give you a high level of what we went through in our feasibility study. Talk about the value stack that we saw from Iowa City based on the RFP, based on conversations we have with staff. Go through some comparable cities that we had recognized as we were doing research on Iowa City, and then really dive into our analysis and final recommendation. So, high level overview of what we went through with the RFP is, we researched eight different locations, eight different municipal-owned facilities. The RFP started with six, throughout this process, we added two on, which were Terry Trueblood and the Robert A. Lee Rec Center. And at each one of these facilities, we analyzed what the current cost was for electricity, what the usage was like, and then we would overlay that with solar generation. And at the end of, after doing that, we took a couple of the constraints as far as geographical constraints, physical constraints, technical constraints, and that really sized our project. From there, we went into a financial analysis, understanding construction costs, understanding, you know, what type of visibility you were looking at. And what I mean by that is, in the RFP itself and through conversations we had, a big part of looking at some solar PV on your municipal-owned facilities was you were, you wanted some visible solar arrays for, for your constituents, for your citizens to come by and drive and see. So, we took that into account as well. And then obviously, the greenhouse gas emissions, as Ashley mentioned, your climate action plan, that's, those are, so you have some aggressive goals there, you know, 26%, 28% by 2025, 80% by 2050. So, those were what really we measured throughout this process, and a big part of this was looking at the finance, the financials of going forward with the project. So, as we had conversations with your city staff, going through the RFP, the big things that we really took away from what you valued as far as this project was low-cost electricity. You know, we wanted to figure out what's the best economic solution to build one of these projects, or several of these projects at different locations, the return on visibility as we just mentioned, the greenhouse gas emissions, and then obviously, the economic development aspects of a project like this. So, how our project started was, we really looked at all eight different sites. So, Sri and the development team, they did, they looked at 14, 15 different designs, about three to four at each site. We couldn't even fit them all in this one slide, so we just wanted to give you kind of an example of what we did. At each different site, we looked at rooftop arrays, we looked at parking lot arrays, we looked at ground mount arrays of different sizes. And what led to those sizes was, was how much electricity was that facility using? And then from there, we were able to determine if it made economic sense to go forward with that type of project. So, one example is the pool house, very small rooftop, very little energy usage, very seasonal. So, with us, with the net metering laws in place in the state of Iowa with Mid-American, that one economically just didn't make sense to go forward with. So, you know, that was one of the first ones that kind of got removed from the yes/no, should you go forward with this, with a solar array at this site? Although the visibility at that one was, would have been a great one given, you know, right on the roof by the pool. So, that's really a high level of what we went through at each site. And then what this really led to was our overall project analysis. So, this slide actually isn't in the feasibility study itself. In the feasibility study, you'll see we broke down each site as a project payback, if you want to look at it individually. Blue Stem, what we do as a company is, we are owner, operators, and developers of low-carbon renewable energy-type projects. So, what we really were asking ourselves was, if today Iowa City wanted to go forward with a project, what is the best solution for you all to move forward with? So, we looked at this from an ownership perspective, as if Iowa City was to go out and make this investment into your community, what's the best possible scenario for you? So, that's really what this slide is analyzing. So, you'll see here, we have four different scenarios. The scenario one and two are really looking at minimal visibility, so this is more rooftop array type, it's more of a rooftop solar array, so if you're driving by in the street, you're not necessarily going to see these solar arrays. And then the scenario three and four, we're looking at more maximum visibility, looking at more carports, a little more ground arrays to maximize the visibility there. And you can see the different scenarios have different amounts of sites. Scenario one and two have three sites, while scenario three and four have six. And the difference between these scenarios is, we really looked at the different ownership structures, and that led to the, you know, the savings and the investment Iowa City would have to make. So, you'll see in scenario one and three, that's looking at, if Iowa City was to make the investment themselves, if you were to go through and own, operate, and maintain these solar arrays, that's what those scenario one and three are looking at. Scenario two and four, what these savings are showing is what your savings would be versus ownership. So, this wouldn't be your savings over the life of the project, and we did a 25-year period, that's generally with the life of these technology, generally the life of this technology. So, we looked at the savings versus ownership from Iowa City, if you were to go forward with a third-party, public-private partnership, where that third-party could take advantage of the investment tax credits that come along with solar. So, you'll see here, just high-level example, from scenario one and two, this is where you're getting your best economics with you went, with one of these two projects. You have the list, you have minimal visibility. You'd have a big ground mount array at the wastewater treatment plant, but the one at Robert A. Lee, and the one at Mercer Park, where you probably have more, more folks driving by every day, this, that's more, that's more rooftop array what we were looking at there. But with this one, I wanted to show you an example here, is that the NPV is what we looked at for scenario one and three. And what this is saying is that the initial investment into this 1.2-megawatt project in scenario one would cost roughly $2.5 million. And your NPV over the life of this project at a 5% discount rate, you'd be seeing a negative $2.3 million NPV. So, you're making back a little bit of money over that 25 years, but the overall investment, you're not going to, you're not going to really see a return on that investment as far as, you know, getting money back on your investment here. A lot of that is due to your current electric rates. They're very low, a lot of that's due to the net metering policies in the state with Mid-American. And so, we were taking that with the current parameters, even taking into account inflation and projected current rate increases. And what we compared that to was, if you went through a third public, a third-party, public-private partnership, same project, same economics, you would see a $1.3 million savings versus making that initial investment. So, for Iowa City, what that would look like over 25 years, you would be spending roughly $1.3 million. So, this is taking into account again, current electric rates, how much you'd be offsetting, and projected rate increase, projected rate increases plus inflation. And that really breaks down to month per month, if you're looking at your electric bill, it's about $45,000 more per month on this first scenario. So, that is what it would look like if Iowa City today wanted to go forward with this type of project. And we just wanted to give you kind of that high-level overview of what it would look like owning it versus working through a third-party, and being able to take advantage of the tax credits. What we also looked at, which isn't on this, which is on the feasibility study in the conclusion section, is looking at each site, breakdown by breakdown. And you'll see there, if you flip to the back of that feasibility report, is, you'll see that Terry Trueblood actually has a pretty decent payback, I believe it's 17 years or so, which, if you were to go forward with one project, you know, that might be the best economic project, because you'll actually see a payback within that 25-year period. However, when we ran economics to aggregate some projects, really try to reach economies of scale, this is what the numbers really led to, is working on these, these individual projects. And then the very bottom here, one thing that we wanted to calculate was what your change in your greenhouse gas emissions would be. We're seeing it with that 1.2-megawatt project, it's roughly 14%, 9% on the 800 KW project. And this is taking into account the best data we had available, using some of the EIA data and invert. We're able to break down the emissions in their different counties. So, we were able to get, you know, between Johnson and Muscatine County, what roughly the energy mix is, and then what this project roughly offset. So, this is, you know, those are estimates, but that's projected about what you'd receive as far as greenhouse gas emissions. What I want to show you next was just, when we were doing research, we were, we wanted to look at other-like communities, you know, other communities with major universities in town who also have similar sustainability goals. So, what I wanted to just show here is, this isn't meant to be a knock on the city of Iowa City by any means, but this is just showing is that, you'll see in Madison and in Ann Arbor, they both have pretty aggressive goals. Madison, obviously, 100% greenhouse gas emissions, Ann Arbor trying to reach 100% of their power usage coming from renewable or clean sources, and the investments that they've made backed into their community. What I really just want to show you here is that, there's many communities like this with similar demographics to the city of Iowa City, and what they've done is, they've put this investment back into their community. So, you know, it's whether Iowa City wants to do this or not, it's up to you, obviously. But Madison's done each year over the past few years, is they've added $750,000 to $1 million into their budget to focus on sustainability goals. And part of that, which is, which has led to, you know, them investing in a $14 million, or 14-megawatt, excuse me, 14-megawatt solar project. And then Ann Arbor, similar type structure, and they've invested into a solar array in 2013, landfill gas generation, and some hydro, hydroelectricity in their facility as well. So, we just wanted to show you here that this is happening around the country. You know, we weren't, can't say, I don't know how your budget looks, if you've been budgeting for to put, to put investment into a solar array, if you want to own it or operate. Just wanted to kind of give you a little more of a, I guess, regional view of what's been going on with similar, with communities with similar demographics here. And, you know, finally, really what Blue Stem recommend, if the city of Iowa City wants to move forward with this project, given the current, given the current economics of your projects, the current parameters that we were given with the RFP, we would suggest moving forward with a third-party, public-private partnership. Why? Is because you avoid the upfront capital cost, you're going to save roughly $1.3 million to $500,000 if you went with one of those, with one of those suggested projects. It'd even be, you know, obviously, less if you went with just that one Terry Trueblood project. And with, working with that third-party, public-private partnership, they're able to take advantage of the investment tax credits, which leads to a lot of those savings. And if you went forward, you know, you're going to see a slight increase on your month-to-month bill, depending on what size of project you want to go with, but that would be our recommendation. What we'd recommend, if you want to try to increase the economics of your project, is to partner with some of your stakeholders in your community. You know, Blue Stem, we work a lot with electric cooperatives across the country. So, when we were doing this project, obviously, Eastern Iowa Power and Light, they provide electricity to your wastewater treatment plant. And if you could team up with them, you could really increase the size of your project. And they have less clean energy than Mid-Am does, so that would also increase your greenhouse gas emissions. And so, those are just ideas that we would, you know, that we would say, we would recommend looking into. We know throughout this process, we have some other partnerships that, we got brought into a conversation about the University of Iowa, interested in renewable energy. So, you know, if you wanted to team up with the university, there's other possibilities there to increase, again, just to increase the economies of scale. And so, those would be, you know, situations that we would look into, Iowa City could look into to help, you know, even get more savings, or, you know, potentially get more towards the black as far as an investment into solar generation. And the other note that we really just wanted to make here, speaking of, you know, working with a third-party, these solar tax credits, the investment tax credits, they're at, they're at a 30% investment tax credit right now, and that lasts through 2019. Starting in 2020, it goes down to 22%. So, that could just, that could be a decision-maker in, if you wanted to move forward in the next calendar year. If you do want to do a project like this, that would be something that you definitely should take into account, as far as, you know, understanding, working with that third-party, they can take advantage of a 30% investment tax credit, which definitely can help the economics versus 22%. So, that's really, that's kind of what we just wanted to discuss today. I know we were kind of trying to be held down to 10 minutes or so. Any questions?
My guess is there are a lot of questions, but I want to ask one of Jeff Ruin and Ashley Monroe over here. We've talked about third-party before. Can we do third-party relationships in the way that they've just described? Okay, I was under the impression we could not, I don't know why, but maybe I misunderstood prior conversations.
I think that's what the county has with both of theirs.
Yeah, I know they did. I thought there was some, something.
It was challenged about five years ago, and the Iowa Supreme Court said that you could do it, is my recollection.
Okay, well, that answers my question though, so we have that possibility, we could pursue. Okay, do you all have questions for Jamie or Sri, who didn't have a chance to say anything?
I have a question regarding the carbon reductions. Does that include what we would save if Mid-American does go to 100% renewable energy with wind? And the second question is related to that, is people always talk about, well, Mid-American's going to go to 100% wind, is there any need for solar if they do go to 100% wind, Mid-American?
I can take the first part. So, that was taken into current, what's currently available to us as far as information available. So, that's, that's just current today. That definitely would change if Mid-Am, you know, increased that percentage.
So, those numbers, those numbers Jamie is showing are from EPA data, 2017. So, it might change, but if you see, you got to serve your baseload, what they call the baseload, with some kind, with going 100% wind is, is not very feasible. You still have to have a baseload, a certain percentage of baseload, which, which still has to come from either natural gas, or, today it's coming from coal and nuclear, or natural gas.
So, there will still be some benefit?
Some baseload, yeah.
In terms of, even if they do go quote-unquote "100%" to wind, there's still going to be a benefit for adding additional solar infrastructure into our own community in terms of that reduction?
Right. When we say 100% wind, we have to realize that when wind is not blowing, it's not 100%. You got to serve that load through something else, which, which I call like a peaker unit, or a, you know, some other unit, which still consumes some kind of fuel. And also, so I think in one of our conversations, I mentioned that solar usually complements well with wind. You know, when wind is not blowing, usually sun is shining well. And like, usually, wind is quite good in, in winter season, solar is quite good in summer. So, it kind of complements each other. So, it's, I don't see, I probably see it as a benefit where they're complementing each other, second part of your question.
So, Rockne, our late handout includes a memo from Martha Norbeck. Excuse me, my voice is soft today. And in it, Martha draws attention to the importance of peak load, peak demand for electric energy. And as Sri was just suggesting, the peak demand for electric energy occurs in the summer. And yet, that's the worst time for wind. So, there's this gap, and the gap's filled apparently, Mid-American apparently fills that with fossil-fuel-based technologies. Natural gas primarily, I think, but then probably some coal somewhere. But in any event, there's an opportunity, if we can fill that gap, that peak demand gap with solar technologies, then we would be offsetting carbon emissions that are being generated during those peak conditions. So, that's, there's some promise in that, it seems to me.
And we were talking actually on the car ride up too, Mid-Am has a very favorable net metering policy, one of the best, we'd say probably in the country too, and we think part of the reason for that is because they do have so much wind generation, and they understand if they can get more solar onto their grid, that it ends up benefiting what they've done with wind.
So, they have, they have a very encouraging net metering policy, if you compare it with other parts of the country.
Related to the cost savings with third-party purchase agreements, it's my understanding those have been in place now in Iowa for approximately six to seven years, is that about right? About that timeframe? What I'm wondering is, is, is it the tax credit, is that what sort of tips the scales in terms of making that the more affordable option in terms of the city, as opposed to if there weren't the tax credit, would be to our advantage to just outright purchase the solar arrays?
Yes.
Surely.
Yeah, I mean, you're decreasing your overall cost by 30% roughly.
Yeah.
First, so if you were to buy it versus if a Blue Stem was to come and build it, you know, and operate it. So, yeah, it's a big, it's a big financial benefit.
So, your report, I found parts of your report to be pretty inspiring, especially when I looked at the simulations of arrays for each of the eight facilities that you looked at. Mercer Park, for example, there's a tremendous amount of electric energy that could be generated by using car, what do you call them?
Carports.
Carport designs, but also rooftop designs, and then perhaps a standalone facility. What do you call that?
Ground mount.
Ground mount, thank you. But also, was it, all, you identified Robert A. Lee also as a possible site that would generate a substantial amount of electric energy. And what was the one other one? I know I have it written down somewhere. There was, in your list of three, in scenario one?
One and two. The wastewater treatment plant?
Yeah, the wastewater treatment plant. So, it's pretty inspiring, you see all the possibilities there. And I know the paybacks are not good, though they can be a lot better if we do rely on third-party, a third-party supplier, as you described. But there are lots of other values at stake. Last week, this report was issued about climate change and the impacts globally, and it, it really does not look good. And it seems to me that a really crucial value for us to be promoting is to demonstrate to us and to the public, and especially to the people of Iowa City, that we're playing our part in reducing those carbon emissions, and reducing the threat of climate change to the extent that we can. And one way to do that is to build some of these systems. And also, I was inspired by what you wrote with regard to public education and marketing, and later on in your report. And it's a long report, so it's kind of hard to get there. But there are lots of great ideas in that part that could be built, easily built into our climate action plan. So, I was really pleased to see that. Yeah, so, I could go on, but that's sort of a value I want to get out there and be clear about. How about you folks, you have questions for Jamie or Sri? It's a tough report, a lot of it's very technical and pretty hard to digest. But it's a very good report too, it seems to me. All right, I guess I want to ask another question then. And you and I, we talked about this briefly before the meeting. So, in this memo that Martha Norbeck wrote, which Jeff knows about, and I guess Ashley knows about and so on, Martha draws attention to the importance of peak demand periods, and suggests basically scaling PV systems so that they can accommodate the peak demand periods for electric energy within the facilities that we choose to build on. You know, she has a great chart, you know, that shows the gap that could be filled. So, I'm wondering how difficult it is to determine how to scale PV systems to meet peak demand periods most efficiently?
Take that.
So, I mean, as Sri was mentioning earlier, to mayor, with seven of the eight sites we looked at, you're actually, you weren't charged on peak demand. Your wastewater treatment plant, you are. So, roughly how you would do that is, if you have the, if you have the land or the rooftop available, which none of your buildings necessarily would have the rooftop space available, but if you wanted to match your peak at the wastewater treatment plant, all you would do is, you essentially would understand if your peak's 1-megawatt, you would build up to essentially 1-megawatt of AC electricity with your solar arrays, and so that would end up being 1.2-ish megawatts of DC solar, and you're, you'd have different inverters. So, what really what happens is, if there is a way to do it, you just have to build enough solar and have the right inverter to make sure that you, you're never going over that peak, and you're always, when the sun is shining, you're essentially being able to always provide the necessary electricity back to the wastewater treatment plant. I mean, that's what we, that's what we do with our projects.
Just to add to Jamie's comments here, so I was recently at the SPI conference in LA, one of the biggest solar conferences in the country. The conference was called SPI, Solar Power International Conference, and ESI, Energy Storage International Conference. So nowadays, maybe in a couple of years, actually today, we're seeing more and more projects, solar projects tied with battery storage. You're going to see that happen more and more in future as well. So, solar and storage have become like one word, undivided. So, I see storage play a role in future to, to, to address the demand, the peak demand issue, to, not just over, sometimes we can build the system, overbuild it to address that issue, but we can also optimize it with the storage component added to it. And a lot of times, even if you were to decide to build a storage project in future, you can still capture the same tax credits that were used on an older solar project. So, what I mean by that is, if I were to build a solar project today, but decide to build a storage project two years from now, I can still capture that 30% tax credits which I used on my solar project. Makes sense?
If the law doesn't get changed.
Yes, of course. I mean, today's law is, is written like that.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, that's very helpful. Anybody want to ask Jamie and Sri any questions? Okay, thanks. Maybe you should just hang, stand by, maybe we'll have more questions in a few minutes. But I want to see what Ashley or Jeff has to say, because I think there was more coming our way, wasn't there?
Yeah, we...
You don't have to stand right there, you can sit down, but you know...
Also, Ashley has both of our contact information too, so if questions come up later on, we're happy to help answer those as well.
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely. It's been a major undertaking, working on this project, and ensuring that everybody's on the, on the same page for what we were looking for in our assessment. They did a good job in putting together, like you said, a very technical, in-depth document for us to, you know, go through and look at as a resource for a lot of our facilities, either now or into the future. So, we could talk a little bit about, about the memo, or about the late handout memo regarding our public works facility. We, one thing that we... We, one thing that we cited in the memo that is touched on in the memo from Martha Norbeck is that with the construction of our new Public Works facility, it's not in the building design specifications to add a solar fixture at this time, but it is designed to be accommodating to a rooftop solar fixture. So we're prepared to add that to our budget proposal for fiscal year 20. If that's something that council would find appropriate, we can give detail or more information about from Newman-Munson or from Public Works, if you'd like to hear from them about what that might entail, if you have questions about that aspect of, of where we could go to next. I also could speak to you a little bit if, if there are other questions about options that we might pursue, you know, to address climate emissions mitigation down the road if we don't opt for solar. Just, will take any questions about what you'd like to talk about?
Well, the, the Public Works facility is not included in the list of eight, so that's, we have to talk about that kind of separately.
Right.
It's my understanding, from talking with Jeff, that the payback, the financial payback is much better, would be much better for the Public Works facility. That's what I understand.
Mm-hmm.
And I know Martha worked on that too and so on, but maybe you all could elaborate on that a little bit.
We do. So we had the, the Public Works facility analysis going on kind of side by side with this, this report. The solar system is not designed for Public Works yet, so it's hard to speak in definitive terms. There's a team working on that and they can speak to what they're looking at. You certainly saw a little bit in Martha's memo. But yes, we do believe that the economic payback will be much better on that project than it would be with any of the project sites that were on the screen today. So as Ashley mentioned, in our draft budget, which you will receive later this month at the end of December, you will see funds available in that budget for the design and construction of the, of a solar array to be sized for that Public Works facility so that it can be built in conjunction with the building.
I'd be curious to see what staff's response is to the recommendation of the power purchase agreement financing mechanism. The consultants indicate that they, I think it's on page 153 of the report, that they strongly recommend the power purchase agreement in terms of a financing mechanism. It's my understanding, because potentially it could be up to a 30% reduction that, that you'd have to compensate for some for the return on the person that would purchase the return, but still they're not going to get 30%. So we're still going to get a, a major reduction. What's the staff's response to the third-party purchase agreement as a financing mechanism? Why wouldn't we do that?
I think in the scenarios laid out, it's clear that that's the better option for the, for the eight that were presented here today. There's no doubt about it. But again, those, those cost comparisons that you were looking at were build it ourselves versus that third-party power. It wasn't against a do-nothing scenario. So, you know, what you saw there was the, the third-party option may save one point or 30 million or 1 million, whatever it was, compared to the build your own, but we still need to come up with another million to, to implement those projects. And the paybacks are beyond the life expectancy of the units themselves. So I don't get excited when I see those numbers. I understand the council's desires to meet your greenhouse emissions reduction goals, but when I see those types of numbers, I immediately start to look to other ways to, to address those goals, whether that's methane capture at our landfill or wastewater plant or facility improvements, transportation, any other, any other way, because when we're looking at those 30-plus-year paybacks, I just think there's probably better options.
Well, and that, that would be my question for more, I guess, deliberation and investigation. I'll go back to prior to when a lot of other people were on council, but one of the comments that Tom Marcus made when we were talking about some of these things years ago was, you know, there's, there's lots of ways to save energy and reduce your use that aren't exactly sexy or real visible, but you get a lot better bang for your buck. I mean, that can be new insulation on buildings, it can be changing out windows, you know, just a lot, making the physical plants that we have a whole lot more efficient so they're using less electricity, less natural gas, et cetera. And I think there's times that those maybe can be, but I think we need to do more investigation, a lot more efficient with our money and get just as big a benefit from an environmental standpoint. So I'm not excited when I see these numbers in terms of the years to payback. I realize they'd be shorter with, when you get the third-party provider involved and they can get the tax credits, but it seems to me you're still going to be even, and I don't know what, how much that reduction's going to be, but even if you take, say, a 30% reduction in, in the lifespan of these or the payback period, you're still going to be pushing over 20 years on an awful lot of these scenarios.
Am I correct though, in looking at some of these numbers on pages 174 and 175, there are some sticker shock numbers. For example, Site 4, which is the water treatment plant, I think that's like $1.1 million, which obviously is a lot of money. There are some numbers though, like for example, the pool, albeit maybe not the best in terms of reduction. Am I right in saying that the total cost for that would be $21,000? So I mean, there, there are some, Site 2, $39,000, Site 3, $74,000. I'm curious, of the four scenarios that are identified, let's assume we want to go forward, of those four scenarios that they had identified, did staff have a recommendation as to those four scenarios that were previously identified, which they would recommend?
Well, what I would say, and Rockne, you're, you're absolutely correct, you know, like the, the pool house example at 21,000. If council's goal is more on the visibility side, if you're putting more weight on that than the greenhouse gas emissions or the economic payback, then yeah, 21,000 is not a big deal for us. We can, we could, we can do $21,000 to build solar panels if you're looking for a high visibility project and that kind of location is intriguing to you. In terms of what we would recommend, if we were looking at these eight sites, one, you know, I'll, I would recommend that council, I think you need to bring some clarity. If visibility is what you're going for, that's probably going to give, you know, have us give you a different answer than greenhouse gas emissions. But if, if you just said of these eight sites, which solar you want to do, I gravitate towards that payback period, and so I probably find myself at that Terry True Blood location. And then you need to think about, do you want that, do you want that look at Terry True Blood? Is that, you know, from an aesthetic standpoint, is that the location you want? It's going to be very visible. Does it mesh well with the park and does it meet your other objectives? But that's the best payback that this report identified.
In your chart, you indicate that the payback or the visibility score ranges from one to five. Which is high? One or five?
Five.
Five, thanks. Well, I want us to figure out a way to do more than just the Public Works facility. Now, how much more? I don't know. And I don't know if four, at least three of you agree that we ought to do more than just the Public Works facility. So if at least a majority of council members want to do more than just the Public Works facility, we'd have to figure out or ask staff to help us figure out which one to choose. So I don't know where that stands.
I guess one thing I would respond to is, one, I don't think it's set that we're going to do Public Works. I think we need to talk about that through the budgeting process. And number two, I think it's important, as I can't remember who mentioned it earlier, before we talk about doing more, I'd like to hear what people's values are, because I think, as Jeff just said, how, if you are going to do more, why are you doing more and what is it you want to get out of it? Because that certainly impacts which ones that you would look at. And, and I, I would still, I'd like to go back and ask a question on the greenhouse gas emissions. You'll need to come up to the mic if you don't mind. So you're saying the reduction in the greenhouse gas emissions that you showed in these various scenarios is based on replacing the greenhouse gases that are being generated as part of Mid-Am's portfolio right now?
So it takes it from a county perspective. So Mid-Am's the biggest provider in Johnson County and Muscatine, which is what we pulled from.
Okay, you lost me right there. What, what are you talking about Muscatine for? I'm sorry.
Those are just the two counties that we could pull data from that were nearby. We know that's not, we know that's not, you're, Iowa City's.
It's EPA data.
Oh.
Well, I mean, EPA data for those counties.
Yeah, so we're pulling EPA data from those two counties to understand what the greenhouse gas emissions are from the energy mix in those two counties. So then we were looked at what we'd offset as far as the production that our solar panels or your solar panels would generate. And then that would be the percentage that, you know, and that's an estimate, that we'd be able to offset as far as if you were to build those projects.
I guess, so is Mid-Am a big provider in Muscatine County?
We just took it from a geographical perspective. So I.
Not necessarily from the utility perspective, but a geographic perspective, which EPA does its own thing with all the different providers in the, in the territory.
I guess I'm not.
I can understand your question.
I, I'm not convinced or understanding at least well enough to have confidence that we're going to get the ge, that we're actually going to get that reduction in greenhouse gas emissions.
Yeah, so that's as granular of data that we could get as far as what the energy mix was in this general area of the country. So the EPA, they broke it down by state then by county. So that's why we took more than just one county, just for, you know, just to get more data points.
But I guess my question is, looking at the geography and knowing that Mid-American has a lot more renewable energy than, is it Eastern Iowa? Okay. I, I don't know who the major electric, electrical provider is in Muscatine County. Is it Mid-Am or is it Eastern Iowa?
So the state has only two IOUs, which is, which are.
Energy.
And Mid-Am. So EPA, when they do their, their analysis for 2017, they take the greenhouse gas emissions from these two IOUs as well as any GNTs, which are co-op, co-op power providers in the, in the area. So they, they already did that analysis for us. We don't need to go by utility. We can just go to the geographic location and pull that EPA data, which, which we are using in this.
I still don't follow it, I'm sorry. I just, I don't understand why Muscatine County's coming into it at all.
Well, part of it too is, I mean, your wastewater treatment plant, that is coming from Eastern Iowa Power, which is also going to be your biggest emitter of greenhouse gas emissions.
Right, but when you're doing a site-by-site analysis of the, of the reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, most of those sites are supplied totally by Mid-Am. And so if Mid-Am is providing 80% of our electricity through renewable sources, what I'm having trouble following is, are, how you're coming up with those reductions in greenhouse gas emissions and how accurate are they based on what you're really comparing it to? And that's why Muscatine doesn't make sense to me. I'm sorry, I'm just not following it.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, when Mid-Am says they're doing 100% renewable or 80% renewable, it's at a point in time, right?
Right.
Not, not 100% of the year, not 87, 60 hours of the year, right? At some point in time, they're hitting that, right? I guess they're still using, I mean, fossil fuel sources like natural gas or others. So what EPA does is EPA, so they got to submit EPA what, what they use. So what they spend on fuels, right? So EPA calculates, okay, this geographic region, whoever is the utility is emitting this much greenhouse gas emissions. So if somebody were to do a solar facility in that region, the kilowatt-hours of energy it's going to offset, is going to offset this much of carbon emissions. It's a calculator.
Okay, okay. That makes more sense.
Which we use, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so it's a regional estimate.
It's a regional estimate for, yeah, not by utility, but they aggregated that, they, they must have aggregated that and taken into account.
Okay, thank you.
I think what's not taken into account is any future improvements those utilities may make.
Surely.
Mid-Am has announced an intention to continue to add wind. I don't know about Eastern Iowa, but any future improvements would not be reflected in these numbers.
That's right.
But even at 100%, there would still be a reduction in the carbon emissions if we adopted solar.
I believe so.
Thank you for my difficulty understanding.
Mayor, I know, I know that you asked about, you know, other projects and stuff like that, if we can do something. I, I guess what I would say is if there's a, there's going to be more things coming. And I know that, Rockne, this was something that you really wanted to see. I wonder if we wouldn't, you know, get from staff some possibilities of, you know, other ways that we can do, accomplish the goal?
You mean in terms of carbon emission reductions?
Yes.
Yeah, which would not necessarily be, have anything to do with power generation.
Right.
Yeah, we've talked, we've gone through this a lot among the council before, over the past few years.
For me.
So one of the things we tried to do by commissioning this study was to get us to be able to focus on power generation and what we could accomplish and what we wanted to do, given what we learned from, from an analysis like this.
There may, well, one, we're planning to provide a general progress report as to, you know, climate mitigation projects that we have going on at the city level. So our city operations, improvements that we've been making to our buildings and, you know, the energy savings that comes from, from those types of projects. The other thing that, you know, the, the value of this study has, is kind of emphasized is that we have opportunity to expand on discussions that, that we've started when we were developing the climate action plan for potential demonstration projects or cooperation with Mid-American or, you know, Eastern Iowa Power. We also have upcoming or plans for the, you know, methane studies at both the landfill and wastewater treatment plant. And so through those types of studies, we may be able to identify ways that we can, you know, there might be a methane capture that can be converted to energy in some way. Where, where we're doing both, we're reducing emissions and also generating power for us or in some other, other capacity. So I think there are, there are opportunities. If you want us to outline those specifically, you know, we, we have plans to do that and we'll just move forward with, with making sure we get you that information.
I think that would be helpful so we can really see a comparison of where the benefit is.
We're also planning to outline those specific projects that pertain to emissions reduction and the climate plan during our budget discussion, so that's coming.
Is there an equity filter on, on our greenhouse gas emission reduction plan?
I think that's in the works, so it's still under discussion as to how best to do that.
And it was an equity subcommittee on the climate action plan. They did a lot of thinking about that.
I think that's really important, you know, in terms of factoring that in.
Jim, can I mention something? There's a lot of complexity to this issue, but I think, I understood the purpose of this work session would be for us to give tangible feedback based upon recommendations that were made and the actual details in this report. And there were four scenarios that were outlined. I, I think what I would like to see happen is specific plan based upon scenario two. And if I could just elaborate, and if we're still in the deliberation phase, and I don't know which page scenario, the scenarios were laid out on, but scenario two is my understanding outlined the water treatment plan, which I think, plant, which we all agreed, is the heaviest emitter by far. So I think if we're looking at that pragmatic goal and that carbon reduction goal, that is definitely something we'd want to focus on. They talked, but then compare, in, in contrast, the Robert A. Lee Center and the Mercer Center are also identified. Those are very visible, also have some significant costs. It did not, as my understanding, include the Terry True Blood. So by way of proposal, what I would like to do is have staff give a specific feedback on scenario two with the addition of Terry True Blood, and then come back with a written response to that particular proposal. I think you can talk about, you know, putting thicker windows, more insulations, but, but that is not going to get us where we need to go. And I, and I have to say, I'm a little frustrated with tonight's discussion because the, the world is literally on fire, okay? I mean, there, we have to have a sense of urgency. And what I'm, what I'm feeling is, is that we're just saying, let's do another study, let's kick it down the road six months. I don't think we can afford to kick it down the road six months. I think we need to feel the urgency to do it right now, or at least in terms of. I think we need to feel the urgency to do it right now, or at least in terms of providing the direction. Now, the water treatment plant is expensive. I don't think we can decide that tonight. That's about $1 million. That may just have to be in our five-year capital improvement during our budget discussion year. But from now until budget time, that gives us at least four to six weeks for staff to generate some response. And I think in terms of cost, the thing I like about Terry True Blood is that it does have that visibility piece. And I think about that, people go out there for walking, biking, it's educational, beautiful landscaping, so it would really fit that educational speed. And I could really see classes going out there to enjoy the nature, get some exercise and learn about the renewable energy. So that's what I would like to do as scenario two, and get staff feedback from now until budget review time.
Rockne, it's an interesting idea, and maybe it'll get support, but don't forget, the staff has already suggested we should do public works facility. That's not even in the list of eight that we have in front of us. So if we wanted to do pretty much what you suggested, I would think we'd want to do the public works facility and maybe a couple other facilities.
Yeah.
Which would be equivalent, basically, to scenario two.
It's very similar. And what I was going to say with scenario two, it identifies both Robert A. Lee and Mercer. That strikes me as a little bit much. And my thought on that would be just to leave it to staff's discretion as to, you know, what they think could be more optimal, and then plug that into the five-year plan. But that's what I would like to see done. And I would note that the price of Terry True Blood, as my understanding, is about $74,000 bucks. Expensive, but not budget-breaking.
So you would like the staff to dig a little bit deeper into scenario two.
Yes.
Modified.
Yes.
By incorporating the public works facility and deleting something.
Yeah.
So that it's roughly equivalent to scenario two. And then we haven't made any decision about that, but that, you'd like staff to be directed to do that, right?
Yes.
Can you think of any objection to doing that, Jeff?
I think it's just really important, and a couple of things. We're not asking for another study, and I'm not saying that there's not a, the council shouldn't act with a sense of urgency. What we're trying to say here is that if greenhouse gas is the urgency, then you probably need a broader perspective than just solar. That's my opinion. If solar's what you want and visibility's what you want, then tell us that and we'll rank these for you, and we'll put them out there, and we'll say, council wants to do solar, it's important and it's visible, let's do Terry True Blood, let's do the swimming pool, and, you know, probably a few more of these down the road. But I think it would be really helpful for the collective group to articulate really what you want to get out of this. Is it visibility? Is it greenhouse gas? That, you know, the cost, if we're just looking at scenario two, it's a million dollars over time. That's a lot of money over the time. That's what, you know, we're going to pay in increased utility bills through a third-party provider. That's fine, we can do our best to absorb that, but it's a real cost. I just want you to know that that's a real cost that has to be factored into the budget.
So with regard to the point about visibility, one of the really intriguing things about Bluestem's study is the lengthy section in the back of their lengthy report about visibility and about the merits of increased visibility. I wonder if Jamie, you or Sri could very concisely summarize the merits of increased visibility, as expressed in your report, very concisely.
Right. So, you know, we hear people talking about ROI written on investment. So in solar world, there is this term called ROV, written on visibility. Think about it as Amazon choosing cities for their second headquarters, right? So they had, what, 10 finalists and two cities got chosen more recently. One of the, one of the decision-making factor is renewable energy in cities, because all these big Walmarts and Amazons of the world are looking at that. They want to be 100% sustainable. So now, if the city had invested into that, thinking about Amazon coming into their city in future, so that's a written on visibility or a written on, because it's putting the name of that particular city out in national media that it's eeling returns down the future by bringing business into the community. So that's one way of looking at it. Another way of looking at it, I guess, so the place we, we have our office facility, we have 33 kilowatts solar on rooftop, and now we have a lot of startups that share space with us. And some of these startups are excited to be in that space because they can showcase themselves as a green business. They're telling to their customers that, hey, we rent a space which has 33 kilowatts of solar on rooftop. Now, that's a written on visibility too, yeah. Just my perspective.
I think that the report also identifies the ways in which increased visibility influences people in the place. When they see these panels and so on, then they can be inspired to do something similar.
Sure, like you were mentioning, that if somebody could see a solar panel at Terry True Blood Center while they take a jog, and they want to do that at their homes, you know, that could be solar businesses coming up in Iowa City. That's new revenue, new businesses in the city too. Yeah, definitely. And there was some structures we showed on the report that can bring, that can show you like a more aesthetically appealing solar structures where, you know, people see it and never seen a solar panel in their life, but then want to see it up front, up close, learn a little bit about the technology, what it does, how it converts sunlight into energy. So just put some material out there, you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we need to bring closure to this discussion. So one thing Susan's could put you right about, we have a recommendation from staff to invest in PV panels in our budgetary process for the public works facility, but we haven't decided that yet. So we'll get to that when we get to the budget and CIP. And we have a proposal from Rockne, so we need to decide whether there's a majority of support for. Could you restate your suggestion, Rockne?
Well, I wanted the staff to give us feedback on scenario two. In scenario two, the primary structures in scenario two, my understanding, was the water treatment plant, the Robert A. Lee and Mercer, and there was one other that I forget off the top of my head. It did not include Terry True Blood. So what I was asking for direction on was, is staff feedback on that particular proposal? Just very quickly, I think it does have both the educational and the pragmatic at the same time. Staff could get us the feedback, we don't have to decide that today, but it'd allow us to dig deeper into that one, so that when we had budget review process, we'd be really ready for a thorough discussion on which one of those we want to pick. But the addition to that would be to consider Terry True Blood, because I think that sort of hits it out of the park in terms of return on the investment, return on visibility, educational location, and just general visibility for the city of Iowa City.
I guess my question is, what do you want? I'm not sure what you're asking for staff to do. I mean, there was an awful lot of detail in the report from Bluestem, the cost for the various sites, et cetera, you know, the reduction in greenhouse gas. I guess I'm not quite sure what it is you're looking for.
Well, I mean, in other words, we've had a lot of detail tonight. I mean, nearly 170-plus pages, and I think what this would allow us to do is, we haven't given staff specific detail in terms of particular projects, this would allow them to evaluate this and determine which of the structures within scenario two they'd want to move forward on. Certainly, I think tonight it would be hard to say, hey, we're going to build scenario two every single one of these and add solar structures, but this would allow us to narrow our focus on scenario two to move this forward. Because my goal, and I hope council's goal is, is to move solar infrastructure forward in a meaningful way. And I think starting with scenario two would be an important first step to doing that.
Maybe I'm just having a rough night. I still don't get, I still don't get what you want from staff. I mean, the dollar amounts are in there, the reduction in greenhouse gases are in there, the designs, whether it's carport or rooftop, are in there. So what more specifically do you want staff to come back with? I'm sorry, maybe it's me tonight, but I just don't follow what you're asking for. Maybe Jeff does, I don't know.
I have a suggestion. The real question you're trying to get at here is, I think, Rockne, is, first of all, to direct staff to provide detail about that one scenario, as you described it.
Okay, what detail?
Well, just to do it, so it can be on another work session, I think.
Yes.
And that we can just decide whether we want to proceed with that or not, instead of, you know, recognizing what time it is and the fact we have other things to do.
What detail that's not already in the report?
So the detail would be, what year of the capital improvement project do we want to do it? Do we want to do it in the operating budget for 2020? Do we want to do it 2021? Do we want to take some of these off? Do we want to add any? I mean, so this would be the starting point for deciding which structures we want to do. I don't think we're ready to say we want to do every structure on scenario two tonight. I mean, maybe we are, but I think we should have more conversation on that to narrow our focus. I don't know how much more specific I can get.
Yeah, and there's the question about values too. So it's not purely a matter of numbers and payback, though those are both important. And so we would need to process that. So I don't know, that's a proposal, I hear.
That's my proposal, so.
Yeah, all right. So is there support for what Rockne is suggesting? It's not a decision, it's support for that kind of feedback, and we'll come, we'll revisit it, probably at our next meeting.
I think it would be helpful.
In terms of the solar strategy, it seems like a reasonable approach, but, you know, I think Jeff's comments about how does this fit within a larger framework with respect to reducing greenhouse gases is the question I would want to ask.
Can that be tied with what you described earlier?
Yes.
All right, is that reasonable to you, Rockne?
Yes.
All right.
You want this on your next work session?
Well, if y'all can do it, I don't know if you can.
We can get you some information. It's basically repackaging kind of what's here and...
Yeah, but really focused, you know, not on all the alternatives that we've been presented with tonight by our terrific consultant.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you feel like you can't really do it adequately by the 18th, let's push it back a meeting or whatever.
And are we adding the public work facility on that?
Yeah, that discussion, and, you know, I want to make sure you know, this public works facility, a solar raise, a significant raise, and hundreds of thousands of dollars of cost, you know, as you compare it to others. So that discussion you can have at your CIP budget in January. We'll have the recommendation, we'll have the funds in there to be able to accommodate it, and you can decide if you want to bond for those funds and add those to the facility.
Reasonable?
Yes.
Okay, good deal. Thanks so much, Jamie, Sri, appreciate your good work. All right, moving on. Our next topic is to discuss height bonus allowances for 12 Court Street. Jeff, are you planning to make some sort of introductory comments?
Yeah, just a real quick introduction, this is obviously a familiar topic for you. In your packet, you had a couple of supporting items. One is a simple cover letter for me, trying to frame the discussion. I won't go through that unless you have questions on some of my comments. The more important piece is the pre-application for height bonus from the development team. And our hope is tonight that you can discuss that. You obviously have a little bit more information on where they want to go, but discuss that. And ultimately, what the team is looking for is some assurance as they decide whether to enter a very expensive design phase, that a height bonus application, such as the one they're laying out here, would be acceptable to the council. So they're not going to present tonight, but they are here to answer questions. Staff has not fully vetted the pre-application, I don't think that's necessary, but as my memo stated, there may be some things in here that we would have to iron out with them over the course of the design process.
Okay, and to frame this just a little bit more, I'm going to quote something you state in your memo, Jeff, and that is, "The development team would like a strong indication that their intent for the project is acceptable to a majority of council members." So it seems to me that's the threshold question. And so I want to elaborate on that just a little bit. When we met on November the 6th and had our lengthy discussion about this, tell me if I'm wrong, my recollection is that three members stated very clearly that they supported basically the maximum, 15 stories, assuming that the consultant, or the development team presented a reasonable justification and so on. And three did not. So it was three and three. And on that night, Bruce was placed in a pretty awkward position, because it was his second meeting and the last person to speak, and he made basically a deciding vote, but it wasn't officially a vote, right? So it seems to me that a reasonable thing to do would be to make sure that Bruce, at least, and anybody else really, that Bruce at least has an opportunity to ask any questions he thinks are necessary to enable him to make a good, reasoned judgment from his own point of view. And then we can have some clarity about what the majority of the council prefers. So with that, I would like to ask Bruce to pose questions to any of us that he feels are necessary to make whatever decision you want to make.
Sure. You know, the interesting piece about the 12th Court Street is that it is a controversial conversation that's happening throughout the community because of the 15 stories. As I'm trying to put everything together, when we're talking about the form-based code as well as the comprehensive plan and stuff like that, I, you know, sought out both the yeses and the noes for the project, just to get everyone's perspective. It was interesting, the night of our council meeting, when I think there was, you know, different viewpoints up here. And so if I can ask maybe some leading questions to maybe start the discussion tonight, maybe we can all, you know, give some input. And my hope is that when, as a council, I know that sometimes we can vote opposites, but I also believe that there is an opportunity here where we can agree on some things and maybe negotiate on some things, because Iowa City is a place where developers want to be, and we want to make sure that we're doing all of our due diligence to make it as easy as possible for them with the understanding that we're going to do our due diligence in ensuring that we are the gatekeepers and good stewards of, you know, for the city of Iowa City. So with that said, I guess, when we talk about the 15 stories, and I read over Mayor Jim's report a little more in detail, so it's, you know, like the 12 height average is what Mayor Jim stated. I'm not going to put the developers on the spot tonight, but I wonder if at some point we ask the developers, or the staff asks the developers, you know, would they ever consider less than 15 stories? And if so, what would that be? Because right now, we have a discussion between 12 and 15, where average of 12, that's acceptable, 15, some has, you know, is in support. So I think that's something that we may be able to ask the developers outside of today to help us, you know, be a little guided amongst ourselves in the discussion. When we talk about the addition of the, or the right-of-way of the street, which is going to be Capitol Street, I think we all agree on that as being a positive thing from what I've heard. But is there any compromise here among the council, you know, for the 15 or 12 story? Is there any consideration for that? And maybe I'll even step back and say, when I read the comprehensive plan, or, and I maybe get it all, the terminology's incorrect, but the form-based code, I didn't find anything in there out that has been proposed to be contradictory of what they can do. So I just want, maybe that's where I'll start. With the form-based code, do we feel that this project, you know, can check a box that they've met that? I guess that would be my question to council right now.
What do you mean, check a box that they've done?
As far as like the height bonus, specifically...
Or for the right-of-way?
No, 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 for the building. So for the 15 stories.
Total number.
Yes. And they're on the corner as well. So for the location that they've cited, the form-based code, have they kind of met that checkbox, I guess? checkbox, I guess, is my question.
I'm not.
Well, you're just basically saying is that inconsistent with the cap plan?
And I may begin all the terminologies incorrect.
The master, the riverfront fast plan for heights, yeah.
Yes.
I think in the corner, you can go, that's my understanding, too, you can go like up to 15, like in corners. And the riverfront crossing master plan.
For the master plan.
Yes, not the form-based code.
Okay, all right. And is on that particular site, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, I'm not sure about that, but maybe we can stick with your question. So I'm going to try to translate to make sure I understand your question. The form-based code permits the developer to apply for height bonuses in terms of, what is it, eight or 10 categories? I don't remember exactly, but some number of categories. And of course, they have to justify why they think those height bonuses are appropriate. But in the end, and Eleanor, please correct me if I'm wrong, in the end, it's a matter of judgment on the part of the council, at least if it gets to the council's level, meaning over two stories is the request. It's a matter of council judgment about whether to provide height bonuses, and if so, how much. But there's no legal requirement or expectation that the developer has a right to the bonuses.
When we're talking about the master plan, so that's, it is my understanding that on that corner, that was allowable, and that went through P and Z, the master plan. So is that correct?
Yeah.
There's a height map in the master plan that gives general ranges of heights. It's been referenced in our TIF policy and in other locations. And yes, on, I believe, the corner of Burlington and Capitol, it showed up to 15 stories there, showed a range, not for the entire site, but for that specific corner location there.
Great. And I am so sorry because I touched one button and I had a few questions, and I deleted it. No, I had about five questions, so I'll try to go from memory. Some of it, so for, I saw in there, and what's been submitted, you know, the amenities for the students and stuff like that. And so that looks like an awesome place for students. I know I would love to live there. The one thing that I, well, it sounded like an awesome place, the restaurant up top, I love the rooftop restaurant idea. But some of the things that I do think that, when I look at that, we don't really know what the scale looks like. So a meeting room or a study room, you know, is in there, but we don't know if it's something that is just small or if it's something that is really, really, you know, feasible. If, you know, if it's small and they check the box, but I guess that's something that we'll be able to see down the road when we, you know, if this does get passed through council. So a part of it is where, you know, what we received is seemed, because it's not detailed and finalized, is more theory-based as to what we can expect. The one thing that I do know, when we talk about the conditions, I see some of the conditions coming out in what's been laid out there. Are there any conditions that people found that we need to consider for the safety of the students and stuff like that? I don't know if there was anything remaining that people had that was still, that we still wanted to see within the project.
Anybody want to address that?
Could we, to Gustaf, see if, from a student perspective, if he'd.
Could you?
The only question that I would have is, how does the, I guess, the management plan get enforced? Is there accountability measure regarding that?
Yeah, so what they've done is they've laid out some, you know, again, a kind of general intent on where they're going with the security and their maintenance plan. It's not in an enforceable form right now, but they're talking about the key fob systems and cameras and 24/7 help desks. So those are things that would be refined through the development process. And then on the enforceable piece, how to make it enforceable, we would enforce that when we issue rental permits. So we would make sure cameras are operable, that key fob systems are operating in accordance. We could do checks to make sure that they're staffing any 24/7 help desks that they have. And then certainly, if we got complaints or if we had security issues that were drawing our attention from a police perspective, we could step in at any time and make sure that they were appropriately following that plan.
Gotcha, thank you. And then I guess the other thing would be more of a general thing, not really something the city would be able to do, but I would encourage the consultant to reach out to a diverse range of students to get input on the site design if they haven't already. But I think that will just be useful to really making sure, since it's probably going to be mostly students, to get that input, to make sure that students have buy-in and can generally make sure it's sustainable.
Bruce, following up on your question, or following up on Gustaf's response, excuse me. Previously, Jeff and I had asked University of Iowa administrators to provide us with insight about how they designed the internal layout of their newest residence halls and to do, and how they did that in such a way as to ensure that the students would be able to thrive academically, which I think is an absolutely crucial thing from the point of view of the university, and I would say from my point of view as well. So that information is available. I know Jeff has it, it was sent to us by Rod Leonard, if I remember, or Keef, David Keef, from the university. So that's one thing. The second is, I have a concern about the pre-application packet with regard to the development team's experience with regard to designing student housing of this type, I mean, of high quality. When I read the material in the pre-application packet, I saw no evidence that I could recognize anyhow, that they have experience in designing the kind of high-quality student housing facilities that we're talking about. The examples they used were places like Seven North or Southwind Street, Augusta Place, and a few other places around town where students live. That's student housing, but it's not the kind of student housing we need to see in that location. Because, I mean, if we approved this for 11 stories or 15 stories, there would still be a large number of students living there. And we absolutely must make sure that they are able to thrive academically and be safe in that facility or the towers of the facility. For me, that's, that there's, it's a nonstarter if that's not the case.
I think that's the type of feedback we need from you tonight. You know, as you look at those two pages, the high-quality amenities and the student experience pages, I think it's helpful for them, for the development team to hear that there's going to be a strong emphasis on the student experience, maybe not so much on the high-quality amenities. But when you get those floor plans back and you look at four separate towers, if there's only one study, community room in Tower A, and there's nothing in B, C, and D, that's not going to work. And I think you could be, you know, clear about that, that, and I'm not saying that one in each building would be sufficient either, but just making the point, that's the type of feedback you need. If you're not seeing the evidence here that says the student experience is going to be at the level that you want to see it at, it's good comments.
And that is in the conditional zoning agreement, correct, that it be high-quality student housing?
Correct.
Although we don't quite define that, but we leave enough flexibility in terms of helping them.
But there are some criteria. They're not trivial.
Has it mentioned an architect with experience? Yeah. I'm sorry. It mentions an architect with experience doing this kind of high-quality student housing.
Yeah, that was, that decision was left to me. The development team, I'm very familiar with, obviously Newman Munson, a local firm, and I felt very confident that they have the expertise within that firm to develop a project that has, you know, top-notch, that will create a top-notch student experience. It's not just the architects, right? It's the development team, it's the owner that has to commit to that, too. But I know this team can do that. I think what's important is that you articulate any specifics or just that, you know, Mayor, it's helpful to say, it's a nonstarter, that's got to be a top priority. Then they know that they really have to work on that when they come back with their designs.
On a related point, there's information in the pre-application packet about having, I don't know, a basketball court, a track, and what was the other thing, and a wellness center? And the university's wellness center is located a half a block away. It makes no sense to me whatsoever to have elaborate recreational facilities inside that building if they're dealing with U of I students, because the wellness center is a half a block away.
My assumption would be they're putting that in there because they think it's important for the marketability of the property, but.
Jim, and could you clarify, Jim, to Bruce's point, you talked about 12. So on the record, though, you support an average of 12 stories. Does that mean, then, you would, two 15-story towers would be acceptable as long as you had an eight-story at the other location? Because I think it's important that we clarify, are we having this disagreement over three stories? That's the first thing. And the second thing would be a follow-up. I know the development team doesn't want to get into the details, but it's my understanding in terms of the economics of high-rises, that the structural and engineering requirements that are triggered at six floors are substantial, and that that has not recovered until some threshold, I don't know what floor that is. But when, I think we just talk about floors as if we're just sort of, you know, just these little tiny details, I think it would also be helpful to get that feedback in terms of making this project work, you know? Do you need 15 in terms of the massive structural costs you have at that sixth-level trigger? So maybe, Jim, could you clarify, if we had an average of 12, you're good with that for all four buildings?
If you look at the first memo I wrote, which was back in, when was it, September or August, I can't remember when it was, I had a stepwise progression.
Yep.
And there were like three steps with regard to student housing. So I would say 11, an average of 11 is where I'd start. I might be able to go to 12, that's what I would say. And if you do an average, you can have a building that's 15 and a building that's nine or whatever the math, yeah, that'd be right. And each of those would, you know, be substantial.
And I don't know if we can get that level, I don't know if we can solicit questions from the development team, but in terms of this threshold of floors, I mean, can we get a general idea in terms of where you need to get in terms of recouping those substantial costs that you.
Well, maybe we could ask our staff to respond to that question.
Maybe staff could just, in general, approximate?
Yeah, my understanding is that they're targeting 1,000 units. It's not necessarily a floor-based decision. They're looking at 1,000 units, which is probably built into some pro forma that they've created with some average construction costs for a project like this. It's further my understanding that they're going to need all 15 stories to hit that target. Whether this council says 12, 11, 13, you know, then they have to go back and make that decision. Can they reduce that unit count enough and still make the project viable and go forward? I don't know the answer to that, but I know that their target is units rather than floors. But to hit that at this level, at least of design, they really feel they need 15 stories.
Bruce, do you have other questions?
The only, when I read what was presented, their affordable housing piece, and I know that that was something that Maz has been very vocal about, so here is the, you know, the cash donation of $2 million, and then there'll be affordable units. I think this is a question, is this affordable units? It seemed like this is off-site and not in the building itself. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And then there'll be a building that will be 31-plus units where we'll get $3 million. So I didn't know if one Maz had any, you know, because I know that this was.
Yeah, I want to talk about it, but I'm just like waiting for the mayor to, because he directing now the conversation.
Okay, yeah.
But I'm going to talk a lot about that.
Okay.
When I get to it, yeah.
Okay. So maybe I can wait for that part. So I don't know that I have any more questions, I just know that the vacancy rate, I know that that was a big conversation that we had, how that will be, there'll be vacancies throughout, you know, the rest of the community potentially from this project, but there's other projects, of course, throughout our city. And I know that this isn't going to be the last project that we do in our city. So are there any, I mean, I personally feel, you know, Iowa City is a highly-desired place to live, so I believe that people will continue to be attracted to Iowa City. You know, rates, rental rates may go down, but I didn't know if there was any comments from any council, any of the councillors up here about pertaining to vacancies or any concerns that they may have.
I had concerns about that, because I'd recently heard that a firm is designing building over 600-something units in Corralville. And I think we, as a group, have to think outside the box and not just look in Iowa City, but Corralville is very close to us, it's on our transit line, and students are living there. And these 600-something units are going to be geared towards students. So I think we still have to keep in mind, where are we going to reach that saturation point? We still have those uncertainties and speculations that, you talked about the number of units rather than floors. Do we need 1,000 units? If there's 600 in Corralville, and we've got the RISE, and we've got several other units in town, and we're talking vacancy rates, I'd heard the Mayflower has a very high vacancy rate right now. I'd like to hear a little more on that, if anybody knows more on that. I think that's like robbing from Peter to pay Paul, to, they say that the rents are going to go down because there'll be vacancy rates and students will be moving closer into town. But what about those landlords and those units in the surrounding area where those students did live? So I'm just very concerned about that as far as those uncertainties, as far as the vacancy rates and the number of units we truly do need and when we're going to reach saturation point.
When I look at the vacancy rates, and we've seen some different numbers, and I don't know, you know, the accuracy of all the numbers that we've seen, but I look historically at the high cost of living in Iowa City and the high cost of housing. And the more and more you, I've read about it and you look at it, so much of that is a function of supply and demand. And so to me, to be able to continue to get more units within Iowa City where people want to live, as you said, Bruce, it's a highly-desirous destination for people, I am convinced that it is going to help us in terms of bringing rents down in other locations. I think it will help in the near neighborhood, near northside neighborhoods and maybe Orchard Miller as well, where we have student populations. I think it will impact, I think it'll impact the quarters, I think it'll impact Hawks Ridge. But there is nothing that says those places have to be 100% student housing either. So there's the opportunity, you know, that those ultimately could also be housing for people who are looking for lower income or lower rents to utilize those places. So I think the idea that we, you know, our vacancies go up and hopefully, based on that supply and demand, some of these rents go down, I think is a positive. I don't see it as a risk for the city from that regard as much as, yes, it is a, it's a risk, it's a, has to be a concern, and I'm sure it is based on some of the emails we've gotten from some other landlords, because they may not have quite as desirable property in terms of the age and the quality and the location. And so they may very well find themselves having to reduce rents to stay at the kind of capacity that they want. But it's not something, I'm not going to sit here and refuse to approve a project because a developer's putting up 600 new units in Corralville. I don't think that makes any sense. I think we need to look at what makes sense for Iowa City, you know, and again, that proximity of the university is such high demand, so I'm not worried about it from the vacancy standpoint.
So let me follow up on that, Susan. I know you and I have both received an email. I know you and I have both received an email which indicates that some property managers or buildings now have 15 to 20% vacancy rates. And I have personally heard from several businesspeople in the city concern about increasing vacancy rates and how that will affect not just the housing complexes that we think about, but just other housing in a significant way. And that same email I just referred to indicates that 26 out of 90 units at a new building in the general area are vacant right now, so...
And I haven't verified any of those numbers, so I don't, I mean, they may be totally accurate, they may not, I mean, I just am concerned about that accuracy.
Well, we think, you know, if businesspeople were telling you that, you'd be taking it very seriously. So I sure am. I was at an event just a few days ago, and some businesspeople came up to me and said, "What are you people thinking?"
What I'm thinking is that we have an area of the city that we designated as highly-attractive for student housing because of its close proximity to the University of Iowa, that the master plan for that area specifically called for high-density student, high-density student housing on this quote "super block" through a long public process for changing that whole area to be riverfront crossings, and then went through a relatively extended process of developing a form-based code which allowed for bonus heights in various parts of riverfront crossings based on various circumstances. So to me, when I look at this particular project and I look at the number of units, what the developer's asking for, in my opinion, fits within the master plan for riverfront crossings, it fits within the form-based code requirement as that was all laid out. And will there be some short-term or longer-term impacts? I think anytime you make changes in an economic system, there are. But do we sit here and say no to a project like this because, to protect other businessowners? So do you, do you give them the advantage because they were there first, so to speak?
Yeah. Susan, I've never really viewed this as saying no to the project. It's always been a question of, and what I, what I got out of reading this, this document was really the, you know, that we're talking about a project that I think no one here is saying should be less, in my mind, you know, among the three of us who are in disagreement, less than 10 stories. So it's a, it's a significant project. What we're talking about, in my mind, is how well will it fit in terms of the scale and character of the development within the larger setting? And to some degree, that this document confirmed those concerns for me in looking at some of the aerials and the way in which it's viewed from different points of view. So, you know, in my mind, that then triggered, okay, what, what are some comparables? What even within Iowa City do we see in terms of residence halls and their size? The university, to my knowledge, has no residence hall over 12 stories. Peterson is 10, the two newer ones, Catlet is 12, and I believe Peterson is, is either nine or 10 stories. So that is, that is the scale at which we're talking about for the project. It's not a dramatic change in scale, but it's, it is a change in scale. I also looked at an example in Iowa City as a comparable, where the four buildings that form the student residences on Clinton Street, the Clinton Ensemble is what I, what I refer to it as, and what is its density compared to 12-quart? And what, what I found on a per-acreage basis is 12-quart is about 36% higher in density than the Clinton Ensemble. So it's that to me, it's that kind of consideration, that the imagery I saw in this document and then looking at comparables within Iowa City itself suggested a revision in scale. I don't see it as being a radical change in scale. It certainly will have some potential benefit in terms of the vacancy issues, but it's still calling for a significant-sized project. But it's, it's trying to, in my mind, optimize all the issues we're dealing with, urban design, providing student housing in an excellent location, I don't think anyone disagrees with that. And then lastly, I would say the other thing I took away from this was the design of Capitol Street itself. The design of that, as at least it's shown in this plan, is very auto-oriented. It's 60% of 100-foot right-of-way is dedicated to automobiles, either parking or in terms of lane, traffic lanes.
But the city's going to make that determination, right?
We haven't had any discussions on this.
I understand it's a placeholder, but it, but the question in my mind is, if we're going to promote the reopening of Capitol Street, I would like that street to be a great street. It is the complementary north-south access to Iowa Avenue running through Old Capitol, which is the, really the organizing principle of this town in terms of its design. So it's a very important street, I want it to be a great street. I believe in terms of great streets, the Anne Clary Walkway to the north, which is part of this axis, not, I'm not suggesting that that be what we do on this piece, but it should inspire us to achieve a very high quality to that pedestrian space. The, the height of the buildings that define that space are, have a significant impact on the experience of that space. So in terms of its sense of enclosure and the amount of sunlight that it receives. So in my mind, we, I feel we have a project with a certain baseline. In terms of the bonus heights, I'm thinking that the transfer and the high-quality student environment I would certainly accept as part of the awarding the bonus heights. The five stories to me is where the design of this project comes in, you know, in terms of making sure that it's, it's a high-quality urban design as well as a high-quality design for the structures themselves. And I can see perhaps some degree of award beyond that 10 stories for the reopening of Capitol, but it's, it's the execution of the design, it's taking the, what I almost consider to be the diagram of what we have now and giving it an architectural character through that further articulation of how it relates to the place. So I don't, it's amazing to me that we're, I don't feel there's that much difference between our two positions, at least in terms of building height, but I think those, those floors matter in the end. And I'm, I'm not willing at this point, given the information in this document, to sign off on, you know, 15 stories across the board. I just feel that there's enough information in this document to suggest there will be concern when that building is built, and people will ask, "Who made that decision?" So, you know, that's, that's basically where I feel I'm comfortable at this point.
I think that goes back to what our original intent of this discussion was, the discussion of bonuses and whether to give bonuses or how much bonuses. And in the discussion, it talked about the provision of student housing and a desired location would allow them, they're requesting one and a half stories for that, and there's no question on that. It is an extremely desirable location, it's a wonderful location. And in fact, I think currently the Pennacres Garden apartments don't look that bad, but obviously they don't blend in with the newer surroundings around there. So it would be nice to see some newer, more modern buildings there. The other was the historic preservation, the transfer development rights. And I, I don't think we should go back on our word, and it's my understanding that we sort of implied with the Tate Arms Building and the building that was built next to that, that they would be allowed, they still have an allowance for, for future height. But they, they asked for half on that, so that's an extra two. Where I have a problem with, and John touched on that a little bit, was the dedication of the Capitol Street right-of-way for five floors. That seemed like pretty exorbitant because, for one thing, that used to belong to the city, that was ours, Capitol Street, and we gave it up to them for the name of Urban Renewal. So it just seems, just outlandish to me that we would do that for the dedication of that when it was kind of in the original plans anyway that that would be converted to either pedestrian or auto. So to allow that for the extra height bonus, I don't understand. And personally, I don't like the term or even the thought of bonuses. I see it as almost like bribery. Definition of bribe is favor given or promised in order to influence the judgment or conduct of a person. So I, I just don't think we should be in the business of bribery or offering these kinds of bonuses for that. If they want a 15-story building, they can ask for it. And also, there's been talk about the jobs, and again, I see my union brother, Bill Gerhardt, out there in the audience and talk about union jobs and labor. There's still, there's still jobs for 10-story, 12-story versus 15-story, there's still going to be jobs. And that leads to another comment I wanted to make as far as, in the glossy story that we got, it did talk about utilizing union labor to build it, but I didn't see a real general obvious intent, the language was rather vague. I'd like to see a little stronger stand. It did mention that they'd been in conversation with Bill Gerhardt on this. Union labor, of course, people know my opinion on unions, it's the best way to go, it's the right way to go, do it right the first time. I also think we've talked, we've been talking about visibility, it'd be great for folks to see the, the union labor building these buildings, and hopefully it'd be good for apprenticeships and getting people to think, "Well, that, I can do that, that'd be a great job." So I think that would have a plus for that, too. So, but again, that's going to be 10 stories or 12 stories, it doesn't have to be 15.
So I'd like to tone down the word bribery. Let's just use the term incentive.
Okay.
The clear intent here is to provide incentives to encourage developers to do things that are of benefit to the public, not, not to bribe anybody, it's to provide an incentive. So, so I just need to be clear about that. I would like to raise, well, I want to agree with something else you said and then raise a different point, which I think is pretty crucial here. What I want to agree with is I do not believe that rededicating the right-of-way to the city is worth five stories. I would not support that. I believe, as I indicated several months ago, I think it's worth a story, one story. And that's my judgment. Now, the, gotta get my train of thought back in line, you're having a sudden slippage. Oh, yeah. The other thing I wanted to mention has to do with, with risks. And I think we at least need to be fully conscious of the risk and, and do what we think's appropriate with those risks in mind. So I personally think it could be very risky for the developer and for the city to proceed with a 15-story project with a completion date of 2023. So it's the time of this I want to draw attention to right now. What are the risks? The first is the risk of declining enrollments at the University of Iowa. I'm not saying that's going to happen, I don't know, but I, I can tell you, I believe there's a lot of uncertainty about that. So that's one thing. The second is the risk of the University of Iowa making a policy decision to require second-year students to live on campus. I know some people went to a presentation made by a U of I administrator a couple or three nights ago, or days ago, and that administrator drew attention to this. And we know this, that they are considering possibly requiring second-year students to live on campus, and they're going to initiate a trial program with regard to that. We also know, and this is something that administrator mentioned, is that Mayflower currently is at 60% enrollment, or occupancy, not enrollment. So it seems to me, the smart thing for a developer to do is to phase the project in incrementally over a longer period of time. And for us to say, "Yes, 15 stories, go ahead, be done by 2023," is a big risk for the developer, but more importantly, for us in the city. Because we could find that the university's enrollment goes down, or that the university decides to put second-year students on campus, then what?
I'd like to hear what Maz has, Maz has to say.
Sure.
Yeah. I'm just going to talk about the affordable housing piece to this, you know? I guess you guys talked enough about everything else, but no one like really mentioned affordable housing. I wrote some, like my comment here, I'm just gonna go ahead and read it. First, I have previously stated that I will support up to 15-story height for the building in this project if the affordable housing requirement is met with the fee-in-lu payment of at least, by, I guess the present one is $94,652, but require affordable housing unit. I have also stated that I want the fee-in-lu payment to be used for achieving two important affordable housing goals. And I'm gonna say those two, two important goals for me. First, permanent affordability. We should not invest in affordable housing that is going to disappear in the future. Second, like $400 a month rent, this is the rent amount that is, is not cost-burdening for an annual income of at least $16,000. If we look at Table 10 in the city's tab, 2016, 2010 clearly show that those families and single individuals in this income range have by far the greatest need for no-cost-burdened rental housing. And really, my dream is that the city should use this table as a goldstone guide for any, like, when they're doing affordable housing, I mean. As far as the big number 51 of the affordable housing that provided by the developer, those three, you know, the three, the three option, I guess, I really would like to start with number two. I don't support number two. I don't support two-one unit located like somewhere else, it will be converted to affordable housing for a period of three years. No, I don't support that. And I don't support an annual, if we went to number one, I don't support an annual fee-in-lu payment schedule I proposed in option one. I do support the requirement that the fee-in-lu payment applicable to each project phase be due at the time building permit is issued, and that the amount of the fee will, fee-in-lu will be the amount provided by the city policy. And number three, number three, like I say, is especially housing facility for our underserved and most at-risk population. You know, the idea in general is really good, I like it, but why should our underserved and at-risk population wait until five years after 2000, 2023, which is 2008, so we can build something for them? Basically, I don't support the three of them. I will vote for this yes for 15-story building if the fee only paid on time in each phase at the, the permit, when they issue the permit for this, the building permit. That's the only time I will support the 15-story. Other than that, no.
Jeff, when do we usually require developers to pay the fee-in-lu of? Is it occupancy or?
It's building permit.
It is a building permit?
Building permit, yeah.
Okay. Just asking, no?
I see your shit.
Well, in terms of the, the fee-in-lu of, or in terms of the affordable housing, I have some concerns with what's in the plan. I mean, I can be supportive of both. I think there needs to be some onsite, first of all. I think there needs to be that opportunity for some students to access it onsite. We do have students that qualify. I don't know what that magic number is, and I'm, you know, willing to let staff, you know, try and negotiate that in terms of, you know, talking with the developer, maybe with the university. I think we need to have a percentage of fee-in-lu... I think we need to have a percentage of fee-in-law, and I think we need to have, and I would be willing to do some offsite. I don't think the 20 units for 30 years is even viable based on our city code, is my understanding. So I think that's a problem right there that needs to be, needs to be resolved. And I have a problem, like Maz, I have a problem with the $3 million being basically eight or nine years out. No time value of money assigned to that. So really, I didn't crunch it on my calculator, but I mean, that might, in today's dollars, be 2.2, 2.4, 2.6 million or something. And I don't think the number of units that are attached to that $3 million probably match up either. So, you know, as I've said before, I'm conceptually supportive of the 15 stories. I think work needs, some significant work needs to be done on the affordable housing piece. I would agree with Jim on the fact that, and I think staff could negotiate this, but there needs to be, I don't know if significant is the right word, but there needs to be more than just token study space and gathering space within these buildings. So it needs to be real in terms of the benefit to the students for good academic environment. I think those were my only main concerns. And the other thing I would mention, if I recall correctly, the potential bonus for right-of-way is actually written in the code, is it not?
Yes.
So when council members are saying that they don't believe that the developer should get five floors for dedicating Capitol Street back to the city, that is what the city put in the code in terms of the square footage relationship between right-of-way and bonuses. So this is not something that the developer is asking that's extraordinary or unreasonable. If anything, as a city, we need to go back and look at that code and maybe change the formula. But it is the formula that is in place now. So I would say that the developer has every right to use the way the code is currently written.
If I could comment, I haven't had a chance to speak yet. You know, what this city has been trying to accomplish for at least the 50 years is to basically answer one question. And that question is, is how do we provide high-quality student housing for our students in the City of Iowa City? And at the same time, keep our neighborhoods open, accessible for people of all ages. Students, we absolutely love you. We would not be Iowa City without our student population. However, students have different schedules than sometimes people of different ages. And so what we've been trying to do, and part of the theory of the riverfront crossings, is to allow bonuses for high-quality student development and also to increase our tax base and also to make sure that we have essentially the locations that are most close to the university, that those are built out to the max potential. We get a proposal from one of our top architects in town. Newman Munson has done great work throughout the city. It's tailor-made for this location. It is not a beautiful location right now. It is gonna, it's a $175 million project that they're willing to serve up to us without one penny of taxpayer dollar. And I think, to quote, I think the other issue that we have here is we have families, single moms, workers looking to us right now and seeing what we're going to do on $175 million that's going to be directed directly into this community. And when I walk by these various projects and I see these people working out in the cold and the rain, those people make good wages and they make an honest living, and we are dithering on this project. And I'm a conservative guy. I don't like gambling when we have $175 million investment that they want to make and we're not providing clear guidance as to which direction they can go. And I think if we're talking about 15-story buildings, and what I don't understand, you know, Susan, I was not tracking you on the solar, but I am tracking you on this project, are we really willing to compromise and to let go a project over three stories? I don't understand it. I mean, if we're talking about 12 stories, are we going to have housing Armageddon at 15? I just do not see that. And this notion that, you know, in terms of how we're talking about this plan, I think we also have to talk about what our role is. I do not view at this stage to rewrite the comprehensive plan as written. I think it's to administer what is before us. And so what I think that we do, new expectations, that we don't like the height bonuses, this discussion would have been good to have in 2013 when the plan was adopted or in 2014 when the code was written. So I have every confidence, and frankly, I've liked how the development team has approached this. I think they've been very thoughtful, they've been very patient, they've worked with us. But one would presume that their patience is not unlimited. And so I just, from the bottom of my heart, we have to be clear about what we want. And I support 15 stories at all corners. I think it's a unique opportunity that we could really regret if we don't. And I think as to the affordable housing piece, I confess, it's not an expert piece part, but I think it's certainly a good starting point. What I loved about it is, you know, $2 million in cash is no small thing. I think that that was real. In terms of 20 affordable housing units at 30 years, that's certainly better than the 10. And I think a tailor-made $3 million project that they would pay for over five years, my thought is the reason why they're doing that is so they can get some of the cash flow off this project to help pay for some of this. So I just think we have to be clear on this. And then in terms of the height bonuses, I think in terms of predictability, we need to be predictable. And I think there is a point where we, you know, much in the same way the form-based code, where we had said, hey, in the South District, we want to do the form-based code, that's where we express our preferences, not at this stage where we disagree with it as written. And I think that's a major mistake to add all this uncertainty in it. And we have. That's the reality is, we have created uncertainty. So what I'm hopeful is that if we have four votes for 15, that we narrow in on the affordable housing piece. Hopefully, the development team can reach out, Maz, I hear, Susan, and we can move forward to this project. Because I just think we've spent way too much time on this, and we need to solve this problem and secure in this game for the community. That's all I have to say.
Guess what? I pretty much disagree with virtually everything you said, the way you said it. Because you're assuming that there's only one choice, and that one choice is exactly what the developer's applied for. No other choice. And anything below it is giving up all this opportunity to make, increase the tax revenue, have jobs for good workers, and save the close-end neighborhoods, et cetera. As if an 11- or 12-story average height building complex would not accomplish the same objectives, only not quite so much. So you're just assuming an either-or kind of choice. Nothing or 15 stories exactly what the developer wants. I don't think we ought to let ourselves be in a position where we do exactly what a developer wants. That's a mistake. And moreover, in my judgment, this proposed project, if it's exactly what the developer wants, a complex of four or whatever 15-story towers, it will alter the character of this city forever. And people will remember, and they won't like it. I can't tell you how many people I encounter who say, what are you people doing?
But again, as opposed to 12?
Well, 12 is better if it's well-designed and it's an average of 12. It's not perfect. You know what I think is better? I think better is something like 10, six to 10, somewhere in that range. But I am willing to compromise. That's what I did back when we were discussing the rezoning. I expressed a willing to compromise, and I stated very clearly how I got to that point. I'm not, not going to go over 12 stories average. I won't do it.
Yes, we have to count noses, then, don't we?
I guess we do. And it'd be a good thing. So is there a neutral party listening in? Jeff, do you think, have we failed to discuss anything that would really be helpful to the developer or to the staff or to us, really, that, you know, that we failed to touch on?
Again, I think they're driven by units. So, and that's directly related to building heights at this time. I'm hearing three strong no's on 15 stories. I think the other four of you need to articulate what it would take to get to 15 stories. And then the development team's going to have to decide, either walk away from this thing and leave it as is, or compromise if they can and get, going into a design phase.
I don't think I have any, I would hope that mine are not huge hang-ups for the development team. You know, like I said, I agree with Jim that I think there needs to be adequate space for studying and things like that, that it's not just token space. And I would trust that you guys would take that to heart and know that so that when you come back, you know, I don't say, wait a minute, you didn't do it. And I think because I do believe there are some things in the affordable housing that we can't do anyways with the way it's currently written, I think that does have to be negotiated. And I would trust that, you know, with Jeff's efforts and yours, that we could come up with something that I would find acceptable. So I think I'm pretty much a hard yes with just a couple little qualifications that I think need to be addressed there.
So I think I've got Rockne, Maz, here, if I heard you correctly, you want 100% fee-in-law to get to 15, and that's non-negotiable?
No, it's not negotiable.
Okay. So then it's all eyes on Mr. Teague.
This is where we started, Bruce. Sure. Well, I appreciate you all taking me down the road of answering some of my questions. I guess I go back, and I respect everything everybody said. I do go back to what Pauline talked about was the incentives, you know, and the height bonuses and the master plan, the form-based code, and even the Capitol Street height bonuses. So these are things already, you know, they've been identified. And so for me, the 15 stories have already been discussed, pre-me. So I do, so I would be very likely to support this project with the 15 stories. Now, I do hear what the mayor is saying, phasing it in. I think that that's something that, you know, the developers might want to think about for risk for themselves. I think, you know, does it have to be, you know, 12 or 15? I think there's, you know, some people here that would support the project. It would be nice if we had more individuals supporting the project. So if there's a way to, you know, come down, you know, some to, you know, make the councilors happy. And I think I say that, make them happy, but with, but addressing their concerns of why they're not, you know, right now supporting the 15. So personally, I will, I'm leaning more towards supporting the 15 or this project. I am very hopeful that we will get something back that would really, really be more pleasing to even more councilors.
What I would suggest is that we dive into a couple of specific points. I think we've hit the affordable housing piece good, but I'd like to hear you elaborate a little bit more on the student experience and the security and management plan. If there are particular aspects, when those come back to you, what you'll be looking for, that would be really helpful to staff and the design team.
I'll talk about the security and management. I've, you know, in visiting one of the other, one of our newer ones in terms of security, and you've addressed some of this in here, but maybe not in quite as much detail, but they have, and I think with facilities this large and with this many residents, cameras at every entrance, cameras in every hallway, cameras in every elevator bay, none of it is, according to them, none of it is wiped, none of it's, you know, I suppose today, none of it's tapes, it's probably all digital stuff. But, so, I mean, if the police got a report of an assault that occurred two weeks ago, they could come back and those recordings could be pulled, can see who's in those hallways. The electronic fobs for everything, which you have mentioned in here, which I think is a real positive, that can be traced in terms of what fob has been used where, at what door, and what time. And I think the importance of that 24/7 onsite management and security. We're talking about a lot of people and making sure that they have access to somebody at all times if they need that. And then I think the maintenance plan, real management-maintenance, obviously, when you're putting this much money into a project, there's also a lot of maintenance that's going to go on, and you get a lot of foot traffic in and out of this place. But, you know, a maintenance plan that, you know, is enforceable from the standpoint that when we get five years, 10 years down the road, you know, you walk in a lot of these two- and three-story apartment buildings here in town, and, you know, in the first winter, they're going in and out of there with snow on their shoes, or in the spring, they're walking across the parking lot and getting into mud. And I mean, those places literally stink, you know, because the carpet gets wet and it probably is moldy. So just thinking about those kinds of things in terms of even your building materials in those areas. And I don't know, from a legal standpoint, what staff can build in there in terms of a maintenance plan, an oversight of that maintenance plan, which obviously, I assume, would be enforced on the rental permit renewal. But, so those are the kinds of things that I'm looking for in that aspect.
Those sound like pretty good suggestions to me, Jeff. But I know you and I have talked about having a, what, building manager? Is that the term you use?
Well, they've talked about 24/7 onsite manager, security, management, security.
Yeah. If there are 2,000 students, 1,000 units, 2,000 students, whatever, in four towers there, I don't know that having one manager for the entire complex is sufficient. So I would think that having perhaps one in each building, which is, what, 500, 500 students per building, would be more reasonable. Another thing that comes to mind, and there's some judgment involved in this, I know, I've done a tour of the RISE, and I think it's quite admirable in many respects and certainly has appeal to many students from a basically a marketing point of view. But when I walked through, I thought, is this really going to be, enable them to thrive academically? And my answer was no, because there are so many large-scale TV screens in most of the common areas, if not all. And so I think the team needs to be very clear about thinking about what it takes to be a good student and how to enable the students to do well in school, recognizing, I know you're going to say this, recognizing that it's really, in the end, up to the student to work hard and do well. So those two things come to mind.
I agree with that, Jim. And I think some of the photos I saw on there, I did like of the potential study areas that were shown. There were a lot of windows, a lot of glass, and I think that that is important. I truly believe in the seasonal affect disorder and the lack of sunshine and how that affects people's mood. So I think I would like to see that also in the study areas besides the lack of large TVs, but lots of light and even natural light, the windows is good. I like that.
Sorry. Kind of adding on, I think a lot of concerns that I've heard overall with this student body at least, is regarding the maintenance, but specifically maintenance and amount of time to respond. I'm not exactly sure if that's something you can put in there. But I think when you're looking at a property that's going to have several, it'll have thousands of people, what does that response rate look like? Of course, it depends on all the details on the situation from the maintenance concern. But if you're specifically looking at emergency maintenance concerns, how's that being taken care of? And is that being taken care of in a responsive manner? I'm not sure if there's something you can put there, but that's something to think about. Additionally, this is kind of more on a vague notion that with a lot of students, especially the access to food, specifically grocery store, but obviously, it's kind of hard to navigate that. But that's just an overall issue with the lack of affordable groceries in the downtown and central areas of the city. So not sure how that, if you can encourage that, but I think when you have all of these students there or individuals, they'll need the, most likely, take a car to a grocery store. So that's something they consider when we're looking at, so if they have a car versus not. Additionally, study spaces, possibility of an ITC lab that many, and this is just me thinking about it, but obviously, others thinking about it, but obviously, others, individuals have more insight than just me, just because I know there are people that do not have computers at this time, and it's very necessary. But also, how do you connect it to this, since there's going to be, most likely going to have a lot of students, how do you connect it to university resources? If we're, and that's more of a marketing thing. So something in the, at least in the residence halls, is that they have screens on every floor to advertise events or resources. I'm not exactly sure if that's something you can put in there again, but that's something to be thinking about when developing and catering to this building that probably will have a substantial amount of students. And those are just some thoughts.
Do we know what the parking looked like for, to accommodate the, for the residents?
Underground.
Yeah, there's a specified ratio, I believe. It's a quarter parking space per unit.
And I'm assuming that's sufficient?
Correct, yeah. That's defined in code, and their intention is to place that underground with this development.
Did you have other questions, Jeff? I thought you were saying you had a couple or three points you wanted to mention.
Well, I think those are, from a design standpoint, if they decide to go forward, those are probably the two biggest areas. I don't necessarily have anything else. I don't know if you want to engage the design team at all and ask them if they have questions so that they, if they have any unanswered issues, that you could talk about it more.
I think that'd be fruitful to do. Rob, I don't know if you want to ask us any questions or get us to elaborate on any particular point?
I don't know. No, I don't think we should.
I'm not trying to force you to do that.
No, I actually came prepared to answer questions. So, I mean, I have a lot more statements than questions, but this isn't the time or place in that. A couple of the, can I offer some points of clarification to some of the things you said, maybe some general things?
Yeah, sure.
A lot of these things in the, in the report and the pre-application, and if you do have design questions, I would encourage you to engage Tim. He's the president of Newman-Munson and a lead for our team here as well. But a lot of the things is a statement of intent. Glasses. The document is meant to provide a pathway. It's meant to provide you with our intent to a pretty high level, to a pretty high degree, of what we want to do, because we want to kick into a design phase, a seven-figure design phase, that, as you can imagine, none of us, I wouldn't want to do, go into a seven-figure design phase without some sort of feeling. And so the security piece, for example, is meant to be an outline, and that's why I put in the statement from sort of the initial drafts, that we will develop a full security piece, whether it be with Freeman lock and alarm locally, and doing Woodman controls or Johnson controls, and coming up with a really comprehensive plan that the building department can bring. And that will, that plan that we make will essentially become an enforceable plan that they can slap down and say, "These are the provisions for what you need to do." In the same way, the affordable housing piece is not meant as a locked-in affordable housing piece, it's meant as a gesture. I wrote it. I wrote it with the development team because I felt, and this is my opinion as an Iowa City citizen, I feel like it's a better application of affordable housing to be able to hit a number of areas. That's just my opinion. That doesn't mean, and Jeff stated it earlier when we met, I think the point of that page is that we are flexible and we want to reach an agreement that works for everybody. And we are, the other point of that page with the sort of units and equivalency is meant to convey the fact that we are prepared to provide more than the base minimum to make this project work. And so it is a little bit hard for me to hear that it's not a very good proposal, because I think the proposal offers, without asking for height bonus, additional affordable housing than what we have to give. In regards to the university engagement, we have met with them a couple of times, with Rod and David, and with Melissa Shivers twice. The reason that they were engaging with us, the very reason that we met with them, and this is going all the way back to last winter, was because of the second year on campus. They were engaging our project because they were interested in the second year on campus. Why were they interested in it? They have, I'm going to get the numbers wrong, you can ask them, but Iowa State has something like 6,500 more beds than us for a very equivalent, they're within less than 2,000 students, student population. The point being, the beds are very, very understaffed in Iowa City, and you're not going to put 7,000 beds online in town for that many students for what they want to do for second year. So they're looking, they're not engaging us to buy the building or to do anything like that, there's rumors of all, they're talking to us because they're interested in the project and they're interested in the scale we're at, because there would be, probably be some collaboration, and that's why I was trying to express with that piece, was that we intend to engage Melissa and Rod and whoever, we would talk to anybody, and we intend to, public security-wise, student experience-wise, which you're all very interested in, we intend to have a lot of dialogue along those lines to make sure that those things marry up. And so that's why I put that piece in there, is because they are very interested in the project because they need the beds. That's not why the project is going forward, but Tim could probably speak, I know there were some questions earlier on about the difference between an eight and a 15. A project, and he can speak about it way better than I can, but there's a difference, the reason 316 next door, I have knowledge of that project because we worked on it, I know the developer, and it stayed at seven or eight, whatever it's at, but it got approved to 15. You'll see those being the levels that a lot of buildings go to, because the type of construction, which you were alluding to, that goes to what people will call steel and glass, or steel and concrete and glass, as opposed to what you see around town in a lot of these kind of lower-story buildings, is they need to, that's exponential to go to that cost, and you need to get to a certain level to pay back that cost. And your dollar, the dollars, the rents go up as you get higher up in the buildings, not surprising, and a lot of those upper stories are what pay for the project. 175 million is a good guess, the project is probably more like 180 to 200 million, so not a ton more, but that's sort of the baseline that we're setting. I felt like there's one other thing. We've not mentioned TIF because we, it hasn't been something that we're, has been on the plate. It hasn't been a discussion topic of ours, it hasn't, to my knowledge, there are no buildings of this scale in town that don't have it. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe.
The RISE did not get a TIF.
What's that?
The RISE did not get a TIF.
The RISE didn't, but the RISE was effectively a city project, too.
Just clarifying.
Right. So that's kind of, to me, the RISE is sort of its own, its own animal, if you will. But I think that this project is unique, it's very different from the RISE, it's similar, it would be a similar scale, but it's different, you know, in terms of talking about the, that's kind of like, I don't want to, I don't want to describe what they are, but they, we're different. I would encourage you to look at our project under, as to its own merits. It's lower, the site to provide, the site topography provides the opportunity to put some variation in the site. But, you know, yes, I hear a lot of discussion in that sort of 10, 11 to 15 range, and that sort of sliver across the top, and what that difference is. And that, that difference can, can make or break the project. I mean, some of the assumption of, well, why couldn't we just do a 10 or 12? I don't want to make statements here because we're looking for a path forward, we want to kick into, the reason that a 10 or 12 may not be out there is because there may not be a 10 or 12. It might not be 15 or 11, it might just be, there just isn't a project, right? I don't have, I'm not doing the pro forma, I'm not the developer running those numbers, but we have a program, and Tim was, did a really nice job with his team of working through the program. The document that you see has a lot of design behind it. There, it's a conceptual document, but there's, it is flushed out, is flushed out now to a degree where those footprints work and those items work. And so it's not a design, per se, that's what we're asking to move into next, but it is, it is pretty well researched, flushed out, and preliminarily conceptually designed. So hopefully that provides some clarification. I would encourage you to ask Tim some questions if you have some.
Hi, I'm Tim Schroeder. I can speak to the cost issues of, Rockne brought that up. So there's, what you see in Iowa City is seven, eight-story buildings and then 15-story buildings, and that's because of that cost threshold, when you reach a high-rise level, the cost goes up quite a bit, and so you've got to build to the maximum to kind of make the dollars worth spending. So that's why, you know, I haven't really seen, other than the residence halls, a 12-story or a 10-story building. It's seven, eight, or 15. And more often than not, the most recently constructed buildings that are at that seven-story, eight-story threshold are now going to wood to be as affordable as possible. So that, that's kind of the issues. I'm not saying it's impossible to make a 12-story building, but it hasn't proven out yet. So I just note that.
Okay, I think we've processed this enough. All right, going to move ahead. Thank you, Tim, thank you, Rob. Nice seeing you again. Okay, we get to move to clarification of agenda items.
I write the number 6I.
6I? That's the one about the email from Melissa Dunham about benches on the Ped Mall, and about how they're hostile to homeless people, right? Or allegedly so, right? Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I just received some calls about it. I was overseas, I just came yesterday, and, yeah, I know that, as the city manager, he said we discussed this design on the meeting of January 16. I guess that was my second meeting, right? Maybe I overlooked it and I don't understand anything about it. But, yeah, I really have many questions I want to ask, like, why did we design those, you know, benches that way? And also, if we really thought about to design some of them different way, and as a one, like, different way. I really need, like, some clarification about that, because, you know, I always think any public space should be used by everyone, regardless of, if they are homeless or not.
I can respond briefly. We started the design work, or I guess the master planning work, in I think 2013 for the downtown, looking not just at the Ped Mall, but the greater area. That process, we focused on everything from utilities to benches to lights to trashcans, you name it, if it's part of the public realm, we were talking about it. Our first project was Washington Street, that took place a couple of years ago, and we completed that. You'll see the benches on Washington included the center arm. As we transitioned to the pedestrian mall, we had the same design, it's a different bench, so it doesn't look exactly the same, but still has that center arm. The decision to use that arm was based solely on one factor, and that's to increase the effective seating area. I'll focus on the Ped Mall. During the Ped Mall design charrettes that we had in public meetings, there was a call for more seating in the Ped Mall. At that time, we had roughly 178 seating opportunities down there, but there was a clear desire for more. And as you know, that's a fixed geographic space, and benches take up a considerable amount of time, not, or space, not just in where they're located, but the, kind of the radius around it that you have to keep clear. So the design team was looking for ways to increase seating opportunities with those geographic constraints. We opted for those benches with the center arms, and the theory behind that is that you're more likely to share a bench with a stranger if there is a visual cue or barrier on that bench. So instead of a standard bench, if someone was sitting there, many people may not feel comfortable just going sitting next to a stranger, but when you have that visual cue, that divider there, more people are more comfortable with that seating opportunity. So we believe that it will increase the effective seating area. And when we looked at the, we looked at the all numbers, our projection was that you go from 178 seating areas to about 213 when the project's complete, again, without really expanding the footprint that those benches are taking up.
I really, I don't know, but I really think, like, two inches of separation is not going to, like, really make the people feel like they are not a stranger, or, I don't know. But I think we should, like, look into that again, and we should, like, consider this. It is not even, like, for other people, the people, a lot of people talk about this on the social media, and people, like, calling about it on the newspaper, like, I read it on Little Billy, I guess. I think we need to do something about those benches in the Ped Mall, you know?
We got a, in our late handout, I think it was, we received a copy of an email from someone thanking us for having that armrest in the middle of benches, because for disabled persons, according to this person who wrote, Eve Cassidy, that's really beneficial, to be able to push oneself up more easily. And I don't know, Bruce, you might be able to talk to that.
Yeah, I just pulled up Eve Casserly's email that's in the late handout, and she made a point of acknowledging the, you know, the use for elderly or individuals that are disabled, just to have, like, that, you know, ability to push themselves up, decrease risk of fall You know, I think, I hear exactly what, you know, you're saying, Maz, as far as, like...
We can do what's, we can do some of them like this, some of them other way. Also, like, for people who are really, you know, there is some people, like, big size, they can sit on, they cannot sit on that, too.
No, these are really wide.
It would be really...
These are pretty wide.
This is just in the middle of a big bench.
You want to serve, like, certain people, and you don't want to serve another people? Do both of them, serve everyone.
Who's not being served? I would rather put significant effort, and I've seen some of this on the social media, and frankly, it drives me crazy, because people will be out there complaining about this, because, "Oh, you did it so homeless people don't have a place to sleep." Okay? That's not why we did it, number one. And number two, I would rather put my time and my effort and my money, and I would wish those people would, into finding actually significant, effective ways to help the homeless than... I do the KCJJ radio twice a month, and Steve Silveroff lost his brother recently, and he had a lifetime of mental health problems. And Steve was very, very vocal about the fact that he thought this was a crazy argument. To him, it was enabling people, and that what we really need to spend our time and energy and money on is actually giving people with mental health problems, homelessness, significant help, not worrying and complaining about whether there's an arm on a bench. And I totally agree with him.
Went along those lines. I think that's the point of the Behavioral Access Center for people with mental health needs and are Housing First, so I think that's where I am, too. I mean, I think part of the problem where we are as a country, we always assume the worst intentions, but I haven't gone back and seen any minutes where the topic of preventing homeless from sitting on those benches was the motive. I mean, if someone can find that in the audience and say that that was the motive, and that there's evidence of that, I think people assume that, but I haven't found that. And I'm very proud of what we've done with the Housing First in terms of our zoning, and I'm very proud of the Behavioral Access, it's going to be 8A, so.
But, Rockne, you know, the, I guess, I don't know, I was in here, but correct me if I'm wrong, I think that the city passed an order in 2012 or '14 to prohibit people to lay down on the benches between the hours of 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM in the morning, and just think about it, what that, what that means? We don't want homeless people to sleep there. You know, we don't have to say everything obvious, so they can, we can, they can attack city, but when, when the city, like, passed an order like this, that was clearly for whom this has been made. And now we're coming up, like, many years later, and we just start putting those hands there, and with that, like, orders, you know, the people are going to assume that our intention, even though, I believe 100%, this is not, like, the intention of the city to prevent homeless from sleeping there. I know that what the city start doing about, like, the Housing First, as you said, and everything that we try to do to help, to end the homeless in our community. But, you know, when this coming up like this, I guess people have no choice to think about this, except, like, we are targeting the homeless people. And I don't know, if, yes, the city is doing, like, so much, but we are really moving very slowly, and in, like... If, yes, the city is doing like so much, but we are really moving very slowly in like doing, ending homeless or doing like affordable housing or, yeah, we're doing something, but we are not going like as fast as, you know, that. When you earlier was talking about the urgency of the, you know, ending the carbon emissions and all these kind of things, you know, that energy, I want to see the same energy you're doing it of ending homeless, you know, like providing house. Even I think this is more important than, than all this solar ban and let us like make those people live the, you know, the life that they should live before we can do anything else. The city is going too fast of the Ped Mall, like even how much the Ped Mall was costing. If we really direct that money to build affordable housing and ending homeless and also see how the rate that we're going on doing bark and wreck and all those things, we're doing like, we're going fast on doing those. Those are good things, yes, but we have to think about the need before the want. And I think like home, like affordable housing and finding a place for the homeless is really need and crisis in the city and we should focus on that. And, sorry, the last thing is, I know that, you know, just making the benches with no arm or whatever, that's not going to help the situation. As Susan Mim said, we need to focus on, you know, on like a real solid solution for this. But, you know, for now, yes, we don't need, if you can do like some of, some benches like this and other benches other way, why not? Yes, let us accommodate everyone.
Yeah, I would just suggest, because I tend to agree with the point that the benches are better utilized with mid-arms. There is this sense, when I approach a bench, and I think many people take this approach, that if there isn't an arm, if someone is sitting at that bench, you look for a second bench because of that lack of social space separation. And also the mid-arm might provide more help for a person getting out of the, getting, you know, off the bench. One possibility that, because I design parks and I, you know, sitting is a very important piece of that. One type of seating that does not have that same kind of social issue as benches do, where you are kind of almost in a confined space, how do you negotiate that space with another person that you don't know, is having seat walls that run continuously that are not, where that kind of differentiation is not critical. So you could create ledges where a person, if they wanted to lie down on that seat wall, would be able to do that. And then when they're not there, the seat wall just recedes. It's not, you know, it's just a wall when no one's using it for sitting or whatever purpose they're using it for. So I mean, there are ways of providing ledges, spaces for someone if they chose to lay out other than benches. And benches are probably most effectively utilized if you do have a mid-arm.
We do have seat walls, so part of the 213 number that I gave you of seating areas, once the Ped Mall renovation is finished, 24 of those are counted as seat walls and those, as you mentioned, do not have any type of dividers or barriers to laying down.
All right, so we're almost out of time. I wonder if there are any other agenda items that need to be brought up? I'm not hearing any. And given the time, maybe it's a good moment to take a break. We've been doing this for, what, two and a half hours?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so we'll come back to the information packet.
I really have.
What's that, Maz?
I don't know.
What?
I guess, I feel like, anyway. Okay, let's go to break.
So we'll return to the information packets when, after the formal meeting.
While you're looking, Jim, I'll just start on the November 21st packet. Just wanted to thank staff for the strategic plan report. It's always nice, you know, to get that update because it's, with busy lives, it's easy to forget what we're, what we're doing and just to see the accomplishments that, you know, staff has gotten through, so. And also, it's just nice to have that Ash Bore inventory PowerPoint that we asked for as well, so appreciate those.
Yeah, it's the PowerPoint that was presented at our November 20th work session. So anybody who's interested can either watch it streaming online or get a copy by going to the website. Anything else on the November 21st packet?
22nd.
Okay, let's go to the November 28th packet, which incidentally is my birthday. We should be aware of that, it's a really important thing.
Yeah, one day off, 22nd and 29th.
Yeah.
Making sure we're listening.
Uh, okay. Anything on that topic or on that?
29th. Yeah, I have one. IB9, which is, you know, is a CPRB recommendation, the Citizen Police Review Board recommendation. I really think that we should just like follow up and approve the recommendation of the Police Citizen Review Board. I think this committee is great, but since I being there and I served there for four years, I think this board is really weak. They need to be, and a lot of people in the community, they're calling for a strongest, you know, police review board. And, you know, this recommendation will make them really stronger. And we should really approve all their recommendations.
Maz, you were on the board for a while, weren't you?
Yes, I was there for four years, four years or something.
Yeah.
And I think, yeah, like, for example, if, say, if we are like sustain a complaint and the police chief did not sustain, like unsustain it, what's gonna happen? Nothing. You know, I think, you know, this is really nothing about against the police chief, nothing against the officer. I think we have great police chief and we have a lot of great, you know, police officer. But I just think the community need stronger Police Citizen Police Review Board. And the only way that they can become stronger is this new recommendation.
Well, I guess I kind of disagree. I have no problem with the first 10. I'm looking at the memo that the staff did and staff basically had no problem with the first 10 recommendations. Number one, in terms of making CPRB stronger, there's a lot of state laws that limit what CPR can, what the CPRB can do. So there's definite restrictions there. When I read through staff's concerns about number 11, I thought they had a lot of very good, very detailed arguments in terms of, and it sounded like they already, CPRB already has the ability to hire an independent investigator earlier on in the process, but the timing and some of those details, so I mean, I would be supportive of 1 through 10, but not number 11. I think the staff, and there's code issues in here, it looks like as well, and personnel issues, so I would go along with the staff's recommendation.
Anyone else?
I was just gonna say, I would support a work session on 11 so that we could have more time to think about it. But I would support the changes 1 through 10, as Susan outlined, and as to 11, excuse me, because that's sort of a meteor, more complicated issue, I think it might be worthy of further study in a work session. So that would be my approach.
I want to say that I feel like y'all have me at a disadvantage because I ran out of time and wasn't able to read this and I don't know what's in 1 through 10. I don't know what's in 11 either. So I would say, given that and given what everybody else has said, that I would support 1 through 10, but have some focused attention on 11.
Yeah, well, that's...
That sound reasonable to the rest of you? We can do that in our next meeting, I suppose, Evan?
Could put on a work session for discussion.
Sure.
I think that sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me.
And also, just, go ahead.
Can we invite like some of them?
Yeah, we can, we can certainly let them know and anybody can attend, it'll be public, but we can let the commission know.
Sure.
I do want to call your attention, make sure that, in the memo that you saw, that there's also a staff recommendation that's coming from me and that concerns my involvement in the police officer interviews. We had put in, well, it was a recommendation of the Ad Hoc Diversity Committee that the city manager participated in the officer interviews and that we were going to revisit that two years down the road. It's been, I don't know, three, four years now. And my recommendation is to no longer require that the city manager participate in those interviews and there's some reasons given, so that'll be, it's in this memo and if we can take up that discussion as well at the work session, that'd be great.
Okay.
And the CPRB did get a copy of this memo, so...
They will in their, their packet.
They will in their packet and so they certainly can provide their input to you too.
Okay, so, but there would be, ordinarily in our work sessions, we don't invite people to speak, you know, we just kind of process stuff, so would we be doing this differently?
Haven't we done that in isolated circumstances in the past where someone would sort of come in?
To you? I don't see any harm, especially with the city board like this, if the chairperson or representative wanted to...
Yeah, okay.
I think that might be helpful.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on the 28th packet?
I guess the only thing I would just sort of, just by way of question in terms of, I think it's IPA, is that the pending work session topics? I want to keep my eye on the ball for the work session date for 101 LUSK. We don't need to pick an exact date today, but do staff have an approximate timeframe? I was thinking, when we originally proposed this, I think was like August or September and we were sort of thinking it would be sometime during the deep dark winter, February. Where were we sort of thinking in terms of when we'd want to have it?
Yeah, we just had a meeting on that a week or two ago. I think, I think February would probably be reasonable expectation.
Okay, so just if we could keep that in the general timeframe, that'd be great.
Okay, okay, okay. Anything else on the November 28th packet? All right, I'm hearing nothing, so how about?
I'm gonna be next one.
Council updates on assigned boards, commissions and committees. So, Rockne, let's start with you and go to the left this time, which means you'll be next.
I was bad and did not attend my meeting, but I did have an excuse. I had an appointment in federal court and the judge would have been mad at me, so I don't have an update for the City of Literature, unfortunately. So don't kick me off just yet.
Okay. Maz?
For me too, you know, it was on the 27th, but you know, they canceled it for somehow. I don't know. That's why I didn't go.
So much for these updates so far.
That's right.
Yeah.
Bruce? Nothing? Okay, fine.
Good, finally. I went to the ECIO CLG, the East Central Iowa Council of Governments meeting recently, which would technically have been my last meeting because they do things differently. Next time around will be the Board of Supervisors' turn. And we, after our regular meeting, had a joint meeting with the City of Iowa City and the Iowa League of Cities for a legislative forum. So a number of the state legislators were there, as well as the Iowa League handed out these rulers to...
Under 299, right?
Yeah, they must be. They're very cheap. Some of them aren't even very straight, but...
Yeah, and she's very, right?
They're really, I don't know if anybody uses rules anymore.
They probably have a negative value.
I know the nuns used to in Catholic school, but measuring 50 years of local control because they really talked about that, that, you know, trying to maintain the home rule and those kinds of things for, for the cities. And a number of their legislative priorities echo what our concerns are, including maintain the backfill as long as we can, so that was good to hear.
So you're gonna hoard those rulers?
Nope, nope, I'm gonna pass them down, take them, Ashley and Jeff, if he'd like one too.
Yeah, make sure to use them.
Got to bring enough there.
He's in some of your math classes, good stuff.
Yeah, yeah. There you go.
Yeah.
Oh, but Eleanor.
Yep. Making use of it. So we can like wrap the knuckles in the legislature.
Yeah, wrap the knuckles. Who else wants one?
Well, they needed two and it looks like you guys, you guys are gonna have to fight.
No, we got one more coming. That's the crooked one.
Oh.
All right.
Don't try to measure anything with that. It's nice for making straight lines too, so. And that's it, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Susan?
Flashbacks to high school.
All right, wake up everybody. Susan?
Jack, Joint Emergency Communication Center, we actually have to have our budget already done. So we are meeting this Friday, I think this Friday, this Friday or next?
Two Fridays.
Two Fridays from now. We're meeting to finalize the budget and it's going up a bit, but what I will say is, when we compare ours to one of the other regional, I'll leave them unnamed, emergency communication centers of comparable size of ours, they're running at about a $6 million budget and we're running about a $3-plus million budget. So our folks out there do a fantastic job. I think there certainly were some growing pains when that change was made and, you know, everybody in the county gave up their own dispatchers and we went to that one centralized dispatch for all 911 calls. But I think it works very effectively and I think they work very efficiently in terms of our dollars. And let me tell you, when I sit in these meetings and Tom Jones, the director, is talking about a lot of the technical stuff, it goes right over my head. I mean, various radios and systems, but we've got some very, very good people out there and they're fun to work with, so things are going well.
Do, nothing from me. All right, so there's nothing about, from the MPO?
Yeah, we were there.
I don't think I was there.
Did they do anything important?
We had a meeting, yeah.
Not that I recall.
It's kind of routine.
What a lousy bunch.
All right, so I want to tell you that the Convention and Visitors Bureau's board meeting has been canceled for this month. Instead, the board is going to be partying, you know, some kind of, you know, formal party for the board members. And also, on the 13th of December, the Chamber of Commerce and the Cedar Rapids Metro Economic Alliance will launch their regional legislative agenda and they're going to do it in Swisher, halfway, I guess. So it's their agenda, but I plan to attend. Jeff, I guess you are, or no, well, Ashley?
Yeah, Simon will be there.
Simon is, okay. Well, maybe we could share a ride. Or maybe not, I don't know. Okay, that's it for me. Is there anything else, folks? Okay, I think we're done with the work session. Thank you.